Good morning, this is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals, September 26, 2017, public hearing. We'll start with a special order calendar. Decision item number one, 227-2BZ, 527 East 233rd Street, The Bronx.
Yeah, we got a late adjournment request on this. It didn't ask for any specific dates, so we need to look at the calendar and see when we can put it on.
Is that they could submit a little week?
No. No, I know that, but I don't know what we have.
Oh.
Space we have. Because it requires that we review drawings. It's not just, you know, one to three. It requires that we review drawings.
Do you have any S O Cs for October 31st?
On the S O Cs, but what about the total? Everything is what?
Heavy.
No, that's what I mean. Light on S O Cs doesn't mean anything. You still have to read it. Let's say, what do we have in November?
22.
Yeah, okay, let's do November 21. So.
What?
November 21 with a submission date. Hold on a second.
Number one?
It sounds, oh, we don't have internet today.
Oh, we do. We do have a different media.
Oh, okay.
The submission date is?
Um, I don't, do you have your calendar? All right, November, um, November 21.
October 31st.
Submission, November 1.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number two, 164-7.
November 1 and November 21, decision date. Sorry. Okay.
Item number two, 164-7BZ, 280 Marsh Avenue, Staten Island.
Todd Dale, applicant. We are hoping to get adjournment. It's taken a little longer to get the fire safety information that was requested. Because this is in a mall, the mall has access to the space work and it's just taking a little longer. We could probably, we're flexible with the board, but it shouldn't take more than a couple of weeks to submit.
Okay, so.
But we can be flexible.
If you can be flexible, then December 5th would be easier for us.
Fine, sure. So December 5th.
December 5th and submission whenever you can, but by November 15.
Noted, thank you.
Thanks.
Continued hearings, item number three, 413-50BZ, 691 East 149th Street, The Bronx.
Good morning, Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Eric Palatnik, P.C. The reason why this is taking so long, actually, is because BP has been in long discussions over the past year with the owner about subdividing the lot.
Who's been in discussions?
The gas station.
Oh.
The gas station leases the property from the owner.
Right.
So they've been in discussions with them, and it turns out the owner would not like to subdivide the property. So now we are trying to see how we can incorporate that out parcel back into the variance. We would not like to move forward with the subdivision anymore.
So you want to include it in the variance?
Well, in 1994, the variance was amended to reflect the subdivision.
It's in 1950 variance. We can enlarge the zoning lot.
It's a requirement of 1141.
Right, right.
It doesn't permit the lot area of the zoning lot that was in existence.
You have to do a new variance.
Yeah.
With the entire new block.
You're in the C2 district.
Yeah.
Do you want to scope out of 73 to 11?
Okay, we'll have to look into that. But we were trying to move forward with the subdivision, but we were told that the owner would not like to move forward with it. So the reason why this is taking so long is because we're trying to figure out where to go from here, essentially.
Okay, so you're a little bit between a rock and a hard place here.
Right.
We cannot grant the unsubdivided.
Right, we understand that.
So, procedurally, what to do, because I don't want this to be here for all this time. Yeah. Okay. Is January enough time if they need to submit a different application?
I mean, this one would have to be withdrawn.
Be drawn and replaced with a special permit.
So if we could please just have a little more time to figure out the direction we'd like to move forward with, and then maybe we can speak to the board staff when we figure that out.
Okay, so we put it on for January 9?
Okay. And we'll definitely be in touch before then.
Yeah, so you should reach out to Carlo and try to figure out what in the world to do here, because I don't know if the owner is understanding what his or her reticence is having, what the effect is.
That's why the conversations have taken so long. There's been a lot of back and forth trying to explain that to them.
But have you explained, or has whoever explained, that subdivision, without the subdivision of the zoning lot, we can approve this application?
We've tried explaining that, yes.
And the owner's not willing?
They're not cooperating right now, but we're trying to figure that out.
Would it, just putting it on there, would a denial give him the message?
Um, I don't think we ever would like a denial.
I'm not cooperating.
So, no, I appreciate it. Let me go back to our team and tell them what the board told us today, and we'll see what we can do.
We just have to explain that it's not a matter of jurisdiction.
Traditionally.
We understand, and we appreciate the board's help. It's just when you're dealing with someone who's not so familiar with the board's processes, it's hard for them to understand sometimes exactly what's going on. But we've been trying to do our best to explain that.
Well, rather than explain it, I'd recommend that he, the owner, listen to this video, because we're telling the owner is this application will have to be denied if the zoning lot is not subdivided.
Mm-hmm.
And that in order to allow this use, he'd have to come back for a completely new application, and we never can guarantee the results of an application, because it's a completely new application with new findings, new expense, enormous expense, some of it caused by a counsel, but some of it caused by other consultants who are necessary in the process. So just have him listen to this video, and he shouldn't need to know more arcane understanding of how the process works.
Good words, thank you. At one year's expense, though. That's good.
Is there any submission date?
Sorry, right, so submission date for, when I say January 9?
Yes.
Is 20th, December 20.
Okay. We appreciate your help, thank you.
Sure.
Item number four, 1016-84BZ, 790 Coney Island, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Carl Safaro, applicant. I'll give some documentation regarding our intention to discontinue the painting and spraying of cars. Since we don't have a paint spray booth, gave you a photograph as well to show the cleaning up of the front of the facade of the building, and noted the condition on the revised drawings.
Right, okay. So then, I don't think we had any other comments, right? Any speakers on this? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair, pull mudder.
Aye.
Vice Chair, Chanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown.
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition. Condition is already what we've been talking about, that no paint spraying of any kind whatsoever on the premises or on the public way in front of the premises is permitted in the absence of the installation of a D E P and fire department approved spray booth. Okay?
Chair, pull mudder.
So I think I need to say, on that motion, a motion to grant.
Chair, pull mudder.
Aye.
Vice Chair, Chanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley-Brown.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Aye.
Item number five, 65-94BZ, 144-2 Jewel Avenue, Queens.
Good morning, Todd Dale, for the applicant. We were seeking an adjournment. I know there was discussion yesterday at review session about the length of time of the application, and we understand and we appreciate the board's base. And just to provide some background, as we recall, this application was moving along until it was discovered that the trash area, which was in question, was actually in the street. At that time, the owner had done a survey, confirmed that the location was in the street, reviewed any easements or revocable consents to see if it was allowed there, wasn't allowed there. The work is in progress. I have here copies, I was hoping to get copies of the actual installed signs, but I can pass these up to show. This is the signage that had been prepared by the sign company. If they are not fully installed, they will be installed, like, within a day or so, or very shortly. But these signs reflect the signage of the previously approved plans with a slight increase in one of the signs, which was agreeable to commissioners previously. And they're going to remove all the excess signage, retain or restore the pylon sign and then the directory sign on the side of the building. With respect to the refuse area, once it was determined it couldn't be located where it was, the property owner had originally looked to see if there was a way to locate it within the building, and fortunately, it just didn't work within the building due to the fact that he had already leases in place with businesses, also that there's medical uses down there, and there were limitations and concerns about having a trash area next to medical uses. The current plan is in the front of the building facing Jewel Avenue, so the short side of the lot. There is a planting area that's next to the cellar that goes downstairs in the ramp. The proposal now is to take out some of those shrubs and create a fully enclosed trash area there to locate the refuse, because that would be on their property, it wouldn't be on the street facing Main Street, and that's the plan.
Which part of the ramp? Some of the ramp is on city property.
Some of the ramp is, but the ramp is allowed to be on city property.
Right.
The refuse is not.
Right.
So if, let me grab the latest plans, but in the front yard of Jewel, there's an area, there's a, if you face, best place to say is if you're on Main Street and you're facing the building, the long side of the building, okay? In the front area where the building does not exist, there is a set of stairs that go down to the south. To the left of that is an area that's currently with a number of large bushes. The plan is to take out the rear portion of that bush area and create a fully enclosed area nicer than the one that is currently existence, like a fully opaque area for refuse that would be painted and sealed, and that's where the refuse would be stored.
I have a question.
Sure.
How would one access it since the ramp?
Stairs and ramps.
The stairs and ramps all around it, how would one get to that and?
Yeah, and my question is, this was adjourned, let's see, this has been adjourned since January. Why has it taken nine months for this conversation?
Well, as told me, the original thought was, is they went, when the issue first was raised, they wanted to get a brand-new survey, and it took time to get the brand-new survey. After the brand-new survey determined that was the location of the lot, they confirmed that that was their property. They reviewed the title search, they ruled to see if there was any waivers allowing the refuse area to be in its current location. Nothing was found, so then they needed to explore different areas. In the building, they tried to explore to see if there was space within the building, and everything is either, everything within the building is currently leased. There's no, like, common area that could be converted to refuse area. There's stairs within the center of the building. And there's also concerns about, as I said, the interior refuse storage with the fact that there's medical uses on the first floor, and the doctors who have their businesses there were not very comfortable having trash right outside the door. So then they explored, it was actually, the initial exploration was if the building, where the garage is, again, as you face from Main Street, there's that sort of one-story area there. They had explored the possibility of storing refuse on top of the roof there, and the carding company said that that would not be a feasible option to get up there. And also, there was concerns that it would be too close to the residential uses that are there.
They're going to store the trash upstairs to bring downstairs?
They were really, they were trying to, they were trying to explore all options, because when this was really suggested, the thought was, take a look at, including the trash, inside the building area. And that was another alternative that was explored, and it just realized it couldn't work out. And so, as it turns out now, the most feasible and practical option is that Jewel side location next to the existing stairs that are there where the ramp is. So the ramp that's there, we'll revise the plan, but as I recall from my visits to the site, you can, there's actually space to walk in there where that shrub area is. So the idea would be to take the back third of that and put the refuse location there. So it would still be screening from Jewel, you would not see it visually from Jewel, because the shrubs would be taller than the refuse area, and the only visual would be to the left of the cellar stairs as you face it from Main Street is where this would be. And it actually would be a lower profile than the currently located waste area. It would actually be narrower, it would be pushed further back, and it would actually be partially screened from Main Street by the ramp area. So that's the location. We know it's taken a long time, but it's really, they were truly trying to explore options that would work best with, you know, the construction board, residential neighbors, be on their property, but also not create issues for their current medical uses and the fact that they already had leases signed through spaces inside.
Okay.
But before doing that construction, we also wanted to broach it with the board, because obviously, we don't want to start this construction, go to this expense, and then have it come back and be.
But so then, why was, were plans provided? We've been doing this for over a year. This is too little of a case to take up this much of the board's calendar. We've had seven hearings on this.
This issue was only raised in February, or January, whenever the hearing was.
Okay, here we are, it's October.
It's fine, no, and I understand. There's other cases on the calendar that have been going longer than this one, so.
Well, that's not a good way to compare yourself.
That's fair, but in this instance, the board, in this instance, there is effort being made here. This is not a situation where nothing has been explored. As I said, I had hoped to have at least pictures of the signs for you available today, but because of the holiday week, they weren't able to send them to me. But we'll get those signs sent to you, and then have the plans changed, but as I said, before doing any of the work, we just wanted to confirm that this was not going to be an issue. And obviously, they don't want to tear up those shrubs and put in this enclosure area there. But realistically, that's the only spot that we've been able to find that will suit the various factors.
Is the enclosure area going to be recessed into the ground, so it's not like this gigantic box sitting on top?
No, I would have to talk, my understanding is that it's going to be on the ground, because there's actually a ramp there, so it would go up against the northern portion of that ramp, and it would be the shrub height. So the shrubs that are up in the front would actually be higher, so you would not be able to see it from Jewel. And you might be, if you, like, went right up and, like, looked through the leaves, but it would be screening to the, actually, that would be the north side, it'd be screening from the north in Jewel, so it would only be visual from outside the property, from Main Street, just to the left of those stairs that are already there. As I said, the visual would actually be less.
Okay, so what I would recommend is if, that instead of sticking the thing on top, they recess it somewhat? It's a planting bed, right? So you've got probably three feet of planting of soil that could be excavated. Drop it down as low as it can get before you hit something hard, so that the trash is actually an in-ground trash storage place.
Right.
And then we will, nobody will be able to see it for real, as opposed to talking about not being able to see it, because you will be able to see it.
Fine, we'll do the recessing, and as I said, the plan is also to come up with a solid enclosure, not like the chain link.
Right.
See-through enclosure, like make it.
Right, because this is the decorative front of your operation, right?
Right.
And then with respect to the little planting bed that's in the front here, what's this? That's got a few little plants in?
That planting bed, that was when, back there from that, that's the Main Street frontage?
No, I know, but.
Those are the planting beds.
It's just got little pots sitting on the planting bed, so that's the story.
Well, originally, what happened, going back when this was originally a concern, the planting beds had nothing in them.
Right.
And the board had expressed, well, you've got these planting beds, let's put landscaping in. When they originally went for the right side, again, as you face from Main Street, which is where the garage used to be, that solid concrete there, so those planting beds were actually, the dirt went down like two inches or so. So the pots that were put there were ground planters as an alternative, because they couldn't do any in-ground planting for the two right-side beds. To the left of that, it's actually dirt, and if you've got other photos, and we submitted various photos, to the left of that, you can actually have good in-ground planting in those shrubs. That said, those planting beds are not our property, it's city property. So in conjunction with this, with removing the trash enclosure, we were going to remove those beds.
And then, and then re-concrete?
Yeah, yes.
Like paved sidewalk?
Right, unless, I mean, you know, again, we think it would be visually better to maintain it, but since it's not our property, we don't know if we have the right to maintain, you know, those beds there. So the plan was to remove those beds.
Mm-hmm. I don't know about the beds. This is really a D O T subject. It's when we see real structure that we can't have, structure sitting on it. This is a D O T subject about whether you can have, because there's often, like, little green strips on sidewalks and things like that. We see that as part of.
And all along Main Street, every other property has that. Now, they're not subject to a grant of the board, but every other property has beds like that.
They don't put their trash there.
Actually, down Main Street, some of those buildings do, but that's.
They should, okay.
They shouldn't, but that's not, we're not using it as an excuse.
All right, so my feeling is, keep the planting beds, but not, but don't leave them just dirt. They have to have shrubs in them, right?
Okay. For the ones that, where the original building were, we can maintain and keep nice shrubs there. The two that are to the right side, it's literally like three inches down before it hits pass.
You said to the right where the extension is, is also deeper.
No, no, no.
The whole thing is two inches on me.
No, no, if you face the Main Street entrance, so, I will get the site plan out. I'll show. So if the site plan is here, and this is Main Street, here, where the original building was, like, the original building line ends here, all along here, it's possible to plant in-ground, and they've maintained in-ground. These over here are slab concrete where the garage used to be. I guess it was slab, maybe when the cars went in there to support weight, I'm not sure. But if you go down like two or three inches, it's concrete.
Okay.
So we could put grass in there, or they could do those freestanding planters, which was the alternative. We're happy to do either, but it's difficult, I mean, we can try, maybe there's some planting we can put in that's a short root plant, not a, not a hard across.
Yeah, there may be, I'll bet ground cover would work, but I'm not an expert on the depths of.
Sure, it's, but it's this, this area that's the in-ground difficulty.
So see if you can, if there is any live plant that can live in such a shallow soil, or maybe you build up the soil to six inches and you put a slightly higher curb around it.
Okay.
Otherwise, it has to be pots.
Okay.
But the other side should be shrubs wherever there's depth.
The other side, as I understand, like, the last time I was there, it did have shrubs up through.
Because this pictured shows no shrubs.
All right, I'll take, that's right to the right side of the trash enclosure.
Yeah, this is to the right side, so that's where it's shallow over here.
All right, I'll take a look there, and I'll confirm. If, how's this, if we can put shrubs in this area, we will. I'm not sure exactly where the garage line starts, but when this first came in issue, I went to the site and was actually poking with a stick myself.
Okay.
Confirmed. So we'll do the planting, okay?
Okay, so here's the thing, because I don't want to keep having hearings where we look at one little change on a drawing.
Sure.
This work should just be done, right?
Okay.
And submitted with photographs and the drawings that show what's done, okay? And we're going to, and we'll set it for the last hearing, okay?
Okay.
Otherwise, there's no more excuses, okay? So the last hearing in, like, the end of January.
That's fine. As I said, the signs are virtually done. I don't expect the recessing will take.
Don't know.
Very long.
Everything else took nine months, so I don't know. So that's why end of January, to be, give you enough time.
Sure, and then, as, there were other planned changes that we'll reflect. I know there was, one of the concerns was denoting the ADA access in the restroom. I'm not sure if we submitted those plans, but we'll get those plans in.
We'll swear, but if you can just provide a one complete package.
Yes.
Yeah. So the last notes that I have from January, which was the last time we met, we talked about the sidewalk, the trash storage, we needed a site survey to clarify that there is a right-of-way at the side yard and the extent of ownership at the front lot line, because we didn't really know where the property was. And the plans were supposed to clearly indicate use group four ambulatory care. This was a problem, the plans kept saying the wrong thing. Use group four ambulatory care at the cellar and first.
Right.
And use group six B professional office on the second floor. There's no, and the note is, there's no indication on each floor plan, and the indication on the first page is incorrect. So we're not expanding the six B professional office. It has to be the same as what was approved, right?
Hundred percent. And the issue that came up with that, just as a reminder, is that when they went to give us a bit of occupancy, it was the Department of Buildings that expanded the uses, and when the architect originally drafted the plans, he referred to the C O and not resolution. We'll go back to the resolution and stick with those uses, and those are actually the uses that are, so it's not a change.
Okay, and I don't think anything out of this, the portion of the building that is an addition appears to need a coat of paint, as does the railing.
Okay.
And I'm just making a comment again, I'm just reading what the notes were from the last time. This is a request to extend the term of a variance to operate a commercial use in an R4B and to maintain the non-complying extension in the side yard. Extensions of term come with obligations. That's to maintain, right? So that was one. And then, this was way back when Susan Hinkson was still here, so she asked about the ADA toilet, which does not appear to be accessible. Provide dimensions and prove against the fixture replacement rules that it was compliant at the time of installation. Provide D O V drawings, provide a photo. Okay? All of that was to establish that the toilet was installed, meeting the requirements.
Correct.
Okay.
I have those notes. Okay, so we'll do that, and we'll look at the recessing in that planting bed to make it as low-profile as possible for that, and then all the other work.
So definitely listen to this video, right?
No, no, and I understand. I mean, as I said, I mean, we understand it's been going with appreciation, but it was, it was a surprise partway through the hearing with respect to the trash enclosure, and they really did try and find interior or roof options, which just didn't work out, and this seemed to be the best option, and recessing will help even. That was the core issue.
Okay, and so it's either ground cover or planters on that shallow section?
Right, on the slab section.
Hmm. Okay. Okay. So just taking notes of what we're going to do. Okay, so.
You said January for a hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm going to say January 30th with a submission on, one, two, January 10.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's the last hearing, okay?
We hope it's the last hearing.
No excuses.
Yes.
No, not hope, it's the last hearing. Just telling you, if it's not done, we close the hearing and we vote for failure.
No, no, the work, the work will be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number six, 159-2000BZ, 383 Third Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hello, Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Eric Palatnik, P.C. Trash enclosures seem to be the theme of today's hearing, because we heard the board's comments at yesterday's review session about the fact that the trash enclosure is not shown on the floor plans, and that's because it's going to be constructed in the rear yard, not in the actual building. That's why the trash enclosure was only depicted on the site plan and not within, not on any individual floor plan.
It's shown right up against the building, so then it would show up on the floor plans. It's shown, stuck up against the rear of the building, so if you were, you know how floor plans work, you're taking a section through the floor, so if you took a section through the floor at like five feet above the floor, you'd hit the trash enclosure. So you would, you would actually see it in the floor plan.
Okay, that's how the architect explained it, but they can definitely amend it to show it on the floor. the floor plan.
Right, because otherwise, we're not seeing anything.
That's fine.
And besides that, this is work that should be done, right? This is a legalization, right?
And they will install it. And the plans will also be revised to show the dimensions of the revocable consent area. And to that, we heard the board's comments about placing a term on the applica, on the approval because of that revocable consent. The only issue I saw, we're okay with that, but the only issue I saw with that is the way the agreement is spelled out right now. It's a month-to-month agreement with a 12-month notice. So I'm not sure if the board would like the school maybe to amend the agreement, because the board said that a term would be carried along with the term of the approval. So if it's a month-to-month, I just wasn't sure how we would work that out.
It's not that, I, I wasn't saying that the approval for the entire school is subject to this license, but the, this non-compliant structure that was built, which is being brought into this, into the story, right? Is sitting on property that doesn't belong to the school. The second the license agreement expires, the school no longer has the right to occupy there, and we don't have the right to grant, I don't even, I don't know how we resolve this anyway, because I don't know that we have the authority to grant based on a license agreement for use in, on somebody else's property. So it's tricky. You need to help us with this, because, I mean, it's not on the same zoning lot.
Right.
It's, it's only a portion, and it's not a permanent ownership. You know, the school could cure this whole thing by purchasing that little spot, which by the way, ultimately, it's going to have to do. When U-Haul decides to sell their property, the school's then gonna be in a much more dire situation, because they're gonna have to demolish their lobby and their library, because that's, and what is it, an egress there? Not to mention the basketball court, which is something that doesn't, this just gets reduced in size. But really, what should be happening is if that's part of the school sort of big concept, they should own that. And if they owned it, then we wouldn't have this kind of issue, right? But right now, it's not clear that we even have a method for extending a variance to something that's a subject of a license agreement.
Mm-hmm. We understand. So we'll go back to our team and think about how we can move forward with what we have. And I think the remaining issue that we haven't discussed yet is just that overhanging marquee that was discussed yesterday, and that will be removed.
Ah, okay. So, and what about the caged-in entry area?
That will be, the fence will be removed as well.
Okay. So the fence and the, the entry? There's an entry enclosure, it's like, there's a fence, and then there's an enclosure, all that sits on city property.
Right. So that will be removed entirely.
Okay. And am I understanding correctly that really the main entrance is now that little building, right? As you go up the grand stairs, and now you're inside, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they really need to negotiate owning that. It would be terrible if they were required, because U-Haul gets a good offer. The school's never gonna be able to compete with that offer.
Right.
So, whereas now, maybe they would, so... Okay. Okay. I think that's it. Are there any speakers on this? Okay. Are there any other comments from the board?
No.
Okay. Great. Thanks. So, I don't know, you're gonna need some time to work out.
Right. We're in no rush. I think we'll need some time, too.
Should, should we say January?
That works. We could follow the, the last case, which had a hearing on January 9th, maybe, and a submission on December 20th?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Right? Hello, that's wrong?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Item number seven, 214-2000BZ, 2761 Plum Second Street, Brooklyn.
Van Banton from Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant. In our adjournment request, we had asked for 90 days because of DOB. We had to get a new survey for the adjacent lot for parking. They needed to get a CO for that adjacent lot, and there had been some delays. We received the survey back September, around September 6th, which was the submission date, so we weren't able to file our restrictive declaration until there was at least some documentation at DOB for that adjacent lot. So the architect thought around approximately 90 days to get DOB approval. So we were hoping maybe a hearing at the end of January for a submission in the middle of January or beginning.
Okay. So if, we could have the 30th for the hearing and the 10th for submission, is that enough time?
That should be fine.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. New cases, item number eight, 260-6BZ, 112 Charleston Street and 547 Brennan Street, Manhattan.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Mr. Zurhellen. I am the nominal applicant, attorney for the Oechi Judo Club. And the Judo Club has been in existence for some time, 10 years in this location, without any untoward incidents in exactly the same condition and circumstances as before. So I'm hoping that I'm here to answer any questions, if there are any, and if not, simply to urge the approval of the application.
Okay. So I assume that you weren't aware of yesterday's review session where we asked questions?
No, I was not.
So I'll just, I'll just repeat the questions. What, the drawings that were previously approved and the drawings that you submitted, both showed that a fire alarm system was to, was to be installed. So the question is, was it installed? And if it was, then we need proof of installation and fire department sign off. That's our kind of standard operation? Okay?
The fire alarm system was installed initially, remains installed and in operation. And if my recollection is correct, I stated that in my revised statement of facts to Mr. Segovia. But if further confirmation of that is required, it will be provided.
Okay. So what we normally ask for is proof, the most recent fire department inspection and sign off. And if you, usually there's an alarm company that's involved who does regular inspections. They could also submit a letter saying that it's in, it's functioning.
Okay.
Okay? And then the other was, we just wanted you to clarify the hours of operation.
Is it changing from what, is the, the hours of operations, is it proposed to be changed or is it the same?
They remain the same, and I also think that was mentioned in my most recent revision of the statement of facts. Those are the published hours of operation, the actual hours of operation, and they remain.
Okay.
I don't even want to use the word essentially. They remain unchanged.
Okay. Great. All right. Any other comments, questions from the board? Any speakers on this? Okay. So we just need the, sometimes, oh, is fire department here? They might actually have an answer to this, so sometimes fire department just knows the answer without you having to provide proof.
John Yakavon, Fire Department. I will make a determination and a complete assessment as to whether the fire alarm system was indeed installed, and the board will be officially notified in writing. As to the current status, and if need be, an inspection will be conducted, and just where we could have closure in reference to this case.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Please, I'm sorry.
For the record, does anybody have any questions that may be able to answer, other than what?
No. The only questions are, could you say that the fire alarm system was installed? The answer is no.
Right. Well, that will be, that will be forwarded to this board's attention.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Please, Mr. Zurhellen, please come back. Sometimes the fire department has a chance to check this stuff out before the hearing. Our liaison with the fire department is in transition, so we weren't able to have that done. So we do need you to submit what you have, what you can get, okay? So what's the soonest we could? The 31st, or what did we say? Was the one that only had 22?
No.
No, that's late November. The late, the one that only had 22, that was November 21. Okay. So we could put this on for, so I just want to let you know, if you provide us with this material, or the fire department is able to sign off, we can, we do sometimes on these sort of simple applications, we close on the same day as we vote. So there isn't a further delay in the hearing process, okay? So, but we can't close now, because we still are missing the fire department information.
Understood.
Okay? So we'll put this on for November, oops, that's the wrong year, November 21, with a submission on November 1st, okay? So you need to submit that material by November 1st.
Understood.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number nine, 294-6BZ, 31-11 Broadway, Queens.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Ariel Holzer, representing, from Goldman Harris, representing the applicant. With me today is the...
Well, before you, before you say with me today, I'm, I'm just checking whether we did receive proof of notice of hearing.
I actually was gonna get to that. We made a submission yesterday, but if the board has not had a chance to review it, I have copies here.
Okay. Right. We haven't had a chance to review. I don't know, I'm just looking. I don't see it. Um, thank you. Wow. There's a lot of copies. All right. So it's supposed to be, what's the date? 8/23/17? Okay.
Thank you. With me today is the owner of the applicant, Stephen Calamans. I attended the executive review session yesterday and noted that there were a couple of outstanding items. I'd like, with the board's indulgence, just run through them quickly. The first item, as the aforementioned proof of service, which is in the handout, it was submitted to the board and it was served at the, on August 23rd, and submitted to the board on August 24th, a copy of which has been resubmitted to the board yesterday. The second item was the letter of recommendation from Community Board One, that is also in the handout. Sorry, behind the proof of service, Community Board One unanimously approved the application for the extension.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay.
The third item, the, the chair asked regarding the status of the violations. There were two outstanding violations mentioned in the statement of facts. Also in the handout are printouts from DOB biz website. Certificates of correction have been submitted on both of the violations. One of them, one of them's certificate of correction was accepted, and so it has been removed.
Which one is that?
Sorry. It is violation number 35140319Y.
Which is for...
This, this was for the plumbing, the, and the second one is, the certificate is still pending.
The one for parking?
The one for the, the fence for the parking lot, correct.
Okay.
And then the, the other item was regarding fire department approval. Submitted in the handout on the last sheet is the letter of approval from the fire department.
Okay. Mr. Yakavon's not here, right?
I think you just stopped out. Do you want me to...
Okay. We, we need him to just take a look at this.
Sure. Shall I run through the other items?
Sure.
Okay. Vice Chair Chanda, yesterday had a number of items that she mentioned. I'd like to run through those. The hours of operation remain the same, 5:00 AM till 12:00. Those remain in effect. I spoke with the client yesterday, and he has told me that there are no massage services offered at the premises, physical therapy only. Finally, as to the BSA sign-on analysis, I apologize. It was not in the previous applications. I did not submit one on this application. It was not mentioned in the notice of comments as an outstanding item. I do have, I, I tried very hard to get one prepared yesterday for today. Unfortunately, the architect and engineer were not able to cooperate that turnaround. I do have, if the board would indulge me, this is the frontage of the, of the PCE, if you, showing the signage on the frontage containing the PCE. As per the zoning regulations, the allowance for accessory signs in the district are 500 square feet. It's a hundred-foot frontage. The signs are well within, and also below the 40-foot height limitation. The signs are all well under those limitations. If this is adequate, I'd be happy. Otherwise, I would ask that the, if the BSA would like a full sign analysis, I would ask for the BSA to close the hearing for that submission, which can be made forthwith.
Okay.
If the...
So the establishment, so there's that band of different little silhouettes of people working out, that's part of the sign?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
And there's nothing below that signage-wise?
There, no.
Nothing on the door. Okay. Okay. And sorry, I missed that, the hours of operation?
5:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
And is that in the...
That's the, that's the same hours approved by the board.
Okay. So same as, same as previous. Okay. All right. And so, okay. All right. I think, any other comments on the board? So fire department, please.
John Yakavon, Fire Department. I received this notification. I would like to check the veracity of this, of this statement, and then forward it to the board to...
Well, what I see is, just so, so that's a 2014 fire department, what is it called? I gave mine away. Inspection or something.
Well, an inspection, I don't know if it's, it's not self, it's not self-certification, which is, which is a TR14. It's, yeah, it's an inspection, an onsite inspection, apparently.
It's from the fire department.
I know it's from the fire department, but there's no signature, other than a printed format. I would like to check this out further, to be assured that, you know, everything is in order, in conjunction with this case.
But it's, there's an inspector's name, right? The reason that I'm pressing is because they've given us really everything we asked for, including this fire department sign off, and most of the time, this is enough. So I don't want to drag this on to another hearing.
I know you don't want to hold up the case.
So how about this, that we could make, since we do have this inspection report that's only three years, what?
Okay. So then...
Oh, yeah. Is it, is it possible for you to make a phone call to check this out?
At this point, I have the whole electrical unit. I have their number right now.
If it's not possible for you to make a phone call, then what I would like to suggest is, we say in our resolution that we received a copy of a fire department inspection report dated 1/2/14 by Inspector Asbaghji, which you can...
Right.
Spelling. It's A-S-B-A-G-H-I. And, and that approval is conditioned on this being, the, the report being accurate and the installation up to date. And so then that puts it on the applicant to follow up with fire department.
Yes, you can do that. It could be incorporated into the official certified resolution.
Yeah. That's exactly right. So we're, we'll refer to this inspection report.
Okay. And you can refer to this. In a meantime, I'm still going to double-check.
Okay.
I'm sure everything is fine, but I just want to make sure.
Right.
I haven't been involved with this case from the get-go. So, I just want to be assured that the board is, is completely satisfied. I'll be, I'll be ironing course, I'll be-
Appreciate it. It's just, we try not to delay these if we don't need to-
No, no, I don't want to prolong it.
Is everybody okay with the sign? I think it probably under 500 square, that's a lot of sign, 500 square feet, okay? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any speakers on this, besides? No? Alright, so then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Pomater.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition that, based on the fire inspection report that we received dated 1/2/14, signed, or let's say, somehow indicated that Inspector Asbaghhi inspected the site, we just want to make sure that the inspections are up to date, the fire alarm system is up to date. So that's, somehow or other, you phrase that elegantly in the conditions, right? Okay. So for a motion to grant on that condition.
Chair Pomater.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar, decision item number 10, 255-15A, 106, Ebbets Street, Staten Island.
Good morning, David Businelli.
Good morning. So this is closed, let's see, um, with respect to the front wall relative to the front line. Okay, this is just about the resolution, okay. I think everything was covered, anything remaining from commissioners? No. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Do we have to close first, or?
Yeah, well, so, this was closed already. So, yeah, so the condition is really, this is the part we need to make clear in our resolution, I don't know if that's really a condition, but we need to make clear in our resolution that the BSA is not waiving the required front yard distance from the property line to the front yard, front wall, and that DOB must determine whether that is an existing non-compliant condition. But I know yesterday, there's already a note to that effect on the plan, so that's why, I just think that should be in the body of the text. Yeah, in the recital, so not a condition. So, motion to grant.
Chair Pomater.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 11, 2016-4256A, 147, Stutcher Street, Staten Island.
Good morning, Todd Delpho, Queens.
Good morning. At long last, we have the restrictive deck for maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition of the recording of the restrictive declaration prior to the COO being issued, okay?
Chair Pomater.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda.
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is Dunton, we just got a submission a minute ago, we can't-
Continued hearings, item number 12, 238-15A through 243-15A, 102-4, 8/12/1620, 24, Dutton Court, Queens.
Good morning, Chair Jeff Keery.
Good morning. So, we're aware that you submitted some things on Friday, which the commissioners didn't see until late yesterday, so, and because most of them are legal documents, we haven't had a chance to review them, so that's the reason why we asked for submission several weeks before the hearing, to give us a chance to review the materials. So all I, all we can do here is adjourn this, because we didn't have the chance to review the documents. Okay, so, you can talk to us about them, but we haven't had a chance to look at them.
I can bring you up to speed on what was submitted. Originally, the, some of the Chair, I think, was here last time, had questions about ZR-23891. That has been resolved through discussion with the Bill and Department, that they felt that we had to provide a rear yard specific to this site, not that, because of the size of the lot, it was not a corner, they weren't going to consider it a corner lot. So we provided that, and through discussion with the, with Tony Mathias, and we had a, on, we had a meeting at your, at BSA offices, discussed that we wouldn't have to provide any special notifications, because, or any special notes on the plans regarding that item, specifically because we addressed it by providing the area requested.
Right.
Secondly, there were some questions by the Chair, and the, and the board regarding the flood zone requirements, and the applicability of what we provided on the plans to comply with the Pen XG requirements. We provided those plans, and they were asked to bubble, bubble which parts of the plans are specifically denoted, denoted as applicable for Pen XG, we provided that on the plans as well. There was a question about the homeowners association when we had left off. Now, the last time we were here, I think, was in August, it was my understanding, through discussions with legal counsel from BSA, which is L'Oreal, that we were square, but then-
You were here in August of last year, you were here in November of last year, last.
I believe we were here also in-
In August.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I think we were here in, in, in April or June, sorry, I meant, well, our last meeting this year. Well, when I came to that meeting, I thought we were square with the HOA, and found that the board had some questions, so maybe we're not so square, so, over the, from that time to this time, we'd gone back and forth with L'Oreal. She reviewed it, we have that information, I think, from September 2nd, she forwarded us to us, which obviously we would have liked to go a quicker, just getting information to us to make the edits and back to you, obviously we didn't make it in time.
Right.
For review. The last item is, was the, sort of the question mark hanging out there, was the street status. We have deeds going back to 1898, that really only specify ownership of said tax lot. So the question of who owns Dunton Court, we do not have an answer for specifically. All, you know, all we know is who doesn't own it. And that, I don't know that that helps the case, or hurts the case.
How do you know who doesn't own it?
Because, well, the, in the deeds, it's specified by, at least our owner won't, the, the person purchasing the lot knows he won't be purchasing the street, because it's not described in the tax, in the, in the deeds, going back, you know, to what we could find as a description in, kind of legally.
Not even in the boilerplate, all rights, title, interest to the street bed, and all that stuff, doesn't even say that.
I, I am, not an attorney, I don't play one, but his attorney, my client's attorney, was not able to circle this and say, hey dummy, this is what you're supposed to show them. So I, I don't have an answer on that item. The other question was, does the city own it? And they kind of gave us the letter that said, hey, by the way, we don't own it either. So that question, I don't know if we can provide a whole harmless letter to the city that says, if by the way, somebody shows up and wants to vacate us, we won't sue the city for a COO. I don't know how that would work.
So, so, you know, the reason that this is coming up, is that all of these areas that have these unusual street conditions, we're, we're trying to work with the Borough President's offices to kind of clear this up, right? So what we do, when we have these applications, is we ask the applicant's title company to do the search, and we've actually found pretty interesting, Queens, I don't think we've experienced this, but in Staten Island, the research, and Staten Island has a very odd kind of archival system that's different than the rest of the city, so I'm actually surprised that you find these things in Staten Island. We've had applicants work with title company researchers, and they go back to the deed from 1834, when like, two guys who were lawyers, like subdivided all of Staten Island. So I assume something similar like that has-
Well, that's what we had provided, that it was, I mean, it was 44 pages, or 48 pages, it was a title abstract, and it said, Mrs. Dunton, such and such and such and such, that was the original one from 1898, which actually, I mean, maybe there was one before that, all I know is that she was the, I guess the husband passed, it kind of describes that in the deed, is it that interesting old English writing from 1898? But it doesn't describe, it, it describes, you know, the area by the creek, you know, but it doesn't describe Dunton Court Road. It describes, you know, there's access to it.
Right.
But it doesn't describe like, hey, you know, you guys have title to it. All I, as the applicant for this application, hang my hat, is that the board was able to see clearly the six houses across the street, you know, back in 2002, that somehow this was okay.
Well, no, actually, the board didn't look at these kinds of questions back-
I don't disagree, all I'm saying, at that time, it seemed to pass muster at the time. That's, I'm saying, that's the time I'm hanging my hat.
And to put this in context, it passed muster and created havoc. So now what we're trying to do, is to the extent that we can prevent future havoc, or undo past havoc, we're asking the applicants to do something that they weren't asked to do before, because we've only recently learned what's happened as a result of all of these article, this section 36 waivers.
I don't disagree, at all.
Okay, so, so what I'm not aware, this is, so, I'm just asking, our council, when you got those stack of deeds, it's not like you go through the deeds and figure in, so, and figure out the meets and bounds of each one.
That's the thing, if, if, if all that's mentioned in the title, chain of title for this property is access, is provided by something, I, I just wonder whether it's, it's useful to look at tight chain of title for all surrounding parcels, because maybe, but, why?
The title, the, the one lot in question is a big oversized lot.
Right? It's like, if, if they don't own it, maybe someone else on their block owns it, but you're going to have to go through chain of title for-
No, so, but, so the reason that we do this, is that, that way, we can say to the Borough President, now we know who the owner is, and now we know how you pursue, what, how you pursue the property, because this section of Dunton Court is, is, is an isle, right?
Sort of very short, it goes from 102 to 104.
Yeah.
Only that strip, and on the other side, which I was hoping to find with the earlier case.
Right, right.
That many times, the, the tax lots extended to the street, and then it's kind of portioned out, and then we know, it's very clear, it makes things simple.
Yeah.
It's not that for this. And again, you see that in Staten Island all the time.
Right. But what I, what I mean is, it's an island, and you can't get out of the island unless you have a right-of-way over the rest of the streets, right? It doesn't take you-
Well, 102 and 104, we wouldn't have an issue. But Dunton Court, right, where the, really, where an end cap, you know, where an in, it's a, it would be a through block, because it's essentially the whole block from 102 to 104, and there's one house at the end of 104 that faces 104.
Yeah, 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 I know. Right, but so 102 is not, doesn't go through, it's not a built street.
Again, it's another, it's part of that-
Yeah, yeah. So you can't, so, so, so you're relying totally on the Dunton Court that extends to 104, I guess that is.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And you can't get there from here, because you don't have a right-of-way over it. And ditto for coming around from the other way on 102nd, right? That takes you to whatever that other, this connection is, yeah.
But I think the main road is-
Yeah, it doesn't have to be the main road, it's just, in other words, you're, you're surrounded on two sides by stuff you don't have a right to. So, so my question is this, because you're, sometimes we have the lawyer who's doing the research come to speak to us, and in this case, you're getting information through your clients, through the client's lawyer, and so on. We off, we have had, is that me? We have had lawyers who chase title, and they're specialists in this subject, and they, they chase the title to find the right-of-way. And they're the ones who review these deeds and figure this out. You can either use a title company for this, or you can use your own attorney for this. There, we have, worked with one who did a really amazing job of unpacking what all the deeds are, and bringing it to the point where, aha, now we know that we have access, that there's a right-of-way, someone has to grant you the right to cross over.
Oh, I don't disagree.
Right? So, and so far, no one has done that. So, that's bizarre.
We haven't found that yet.
Yeah. So far, nobody, yeah, we haven't found that anyone ever granted you the right. And so, maybe that's simply getting a letter from the property owners who are adjacent to you, but I don't know that that's, that they own it either, so, right?
When I spoke to the adjoining neighbors, they, they weren't aware of any of this, was sort of, they like, well, we just owned this house, and they're like, third owner from 2002.
No, I know. And that's why there's chaos, right?
That's on the other side of Dunton Court. Again, I cannot disagree.
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to stop this kind of development, because otherwise, these should be mapping actions, and should not be going through GCL waivers, and that's the reason these, these are a problem. So these GCL waivers don't do the kinds of things that mapping actions should do, and they need to start doing those things, like taking responsibility for maintaining and accessing and all, and installing, you know, the proper street beds and lighting and so on, and that's what we're trying to fix here. So what I'd ask you to do is speak to your client about hiring a lawyer who's experienced in the subject of searches and easements, and who can do a really good report, to give your client the access to that portion that gets you, I guess, that's 104th, the, the main street that's in front, not 102nd, this one, right? So, that gets you the access there, okay? We could actually show you an example, we do have something that was really excellent, that, that piece, that one piece-
Tony was able to forward something to me, I wasn't able to put a map like that together, only because the information contained in the deed that was available to me, didn't have that information.
Right. No, but that's what I mean, so you're, you're in a position where you're, the step is skipped. So normally, this is something where the researcher is the person who puts together the whole argument, right?
I'll relay this information to the client, for sure.
Yeah, okay.
If I could only project out to the future, if we're stuck here saying, we don't have access, then essentially, we're stuck. Is, is that the position of the board?
I'm not, I'm not really sure on this, we're trying to, we're trying to resolve it, this is a discussion probably with the Borough President, because that's their story, right? Because there are times when a mapping action is what you need, right? If you don't, if, if nobody owns it, and nobody's in charge of it, and that, and by the way, it looks like nobody's in charge of it.
Right.
The sidewalks don't connect, there's a curb in your way when you're driving up to it, right? So-
I wouldn't, again, I cannot disagree.
So, this might be something where this, where the, the right body should be involved, and finally DOT gets involved in this street, you know? So, yeah, we'd have to say that, short of answering these questions and clearing up a really messy situation, it might be a mapping action. Are there any speakers on this? Okay. Any other comments on the board? This is very tricky. We'll also reach out to the Borough President's office, because they're, the topo department is in charge.
I can say, they, they have reviewed to a certain extent, they have issued house numbers, so, you know, we've gotten that far through topo.
Right, but it's also awareness that we don't know who owns it, we don't have, who has right of access, all that stuff.
Sure.
Okay. Alright, so, if you're going to do the, it doesn't take this long to actually do it, if you find the right consultant to do the work. But, in any event, we don't have space until like, December 12th, is that?
When was that?
I'm just looking at our hearing schedule, yeah.
December 12th.
Okay. Yeah, so we could put this on for a continued hearing on December 12th, however, which would mean you submit this November 22nd, or by November 22nd. So, but what this really should be, is telling your client that there's a serious problem here, and it can't just be that they get a pile of deeds, they need actually, a specialist who traces the deeds and chases them, and constructs the history of the lot.
Sure.
And when they construct it, it's not just for themselves, it's for us, they have to explain in detail the history of this piece of property, and, and figure out who finally owns this thing, and if it was, you know, ultimately, it had to have been transferred somehow, somebody has to own it, it can't be owned by a dead person.
Uh-huh.
So, right?
Yeah.
Which some title companies have told us, oh, it's owned by a dead person, no, actually, it can't be. So-
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
New cases, item number 13, 2016-4296 and 4298-A, 3236, 3238, Shiley Avenue.
Schley.
Schley. Schley.
You added a silhouet.
Avenue, and 580 Clarence Avenue, the Bronx.
Good morning, Todd Delpho, Queens. No, I had to learn the pronunciation.
Thank you.
It's hard to say.
So, from review session, I know there were a few questions that were raised. First, let's start with the community board, but we did meet with them in February 2017. We just had a follow-up meeting about seven days ago, with the committee, again. We've reached out to them to see if they're going to bring this to the full board, and we have not received- we have not received reply back from them. But we have met with the committee twice, they've expressed no issues.
Okay, so, and they've had...
They understood the proposal.
They've had plenty of time.
But if they do have the full board meeting, we're happy to go.
Okay.
If we're notified, so that was it. I do have a few things...
But just a question.
Sure.
So you had a follow-up meeting, why did you have to have a follow-up meeting?
To be honest, I'm not quite sure. The first meeting, we thought there were no issues, and they didn't ask us to appear before the full board, and then when they received the notification of hearing, we were contacted by the committee board again and said, oh, we'd still like to meet on this, and we're like, okay, we'll meet again, and they understood that we had met previously.
Maybe they thought the application had changed, and that's what the notice of hearing was.
It's possible, but there really hadn't been any material changes, some, you know, some documentation changes. In any case, we have met with the committee twice, we're happy to meet again, and should we meet, we'll inform the board of that meeting.
Well, they had their 60 days to review, and it seems as if there's no urgencies, then they didn't submit any material.
In short, they were happy, this site has actually been before the board twice previously, and the main thought expressed at the meeting that I attended was that they were happy, it was three buildings instead of four, so, that's it. I do have some documents I want to pass up, these were just made available recently, so we didn't have time to submit, we will submit them into the record, but I want to provide them for reference, there's two different ones. One is a copy of the drainage plan, one is the approved builder's pavement plan, and another is a document, which I'll discuss later in response to some of the DEP questions that were raised. But starting first, with the BPP, I know that there was a question raised yesterday, I'm sorry, it wasn't quite clear on the tape what it was, but this is the approved builder's pavement plan, it was just recently approved, I just received it yesterday, so I don't know if this addresses the questions that were raised, hopefully it is, but it has been approved, and we will submit this to the record.
So this was approved by DOB, though?
Okay.
Right?
Right.
So my question had to do with the wacky connection to the sidewalk on the, whatever side that is, the north side of the property.
All right, so let me take a look here.
Does that elegant little swoop, and then you take a sharp right, and then a sharp left to get on the sidewalk, which they don't usually, DOT doesn't usually like, they want it to be a gradual transition.
So we're talking where it goes from Schley to Clarence?
Yeah.
And that area where you do have to go left and then right to the sidewalk there?
I sort of don't even under, I don't really understand what I'm looking at there. There's this area that has, oh, it's because there's this green strip, so it's connecting to a green strip, and so your green strip and, yeah, that's what I don't understand, why doesn't the arc that you have for the curb follow the arc for the sidewalk, or the other way around?
So you're talking this area here, correct?
Yeah, in that general neighborhood.
And so, the arc comes, and then it turns right, and then goes north?
Right.
I can reach out to the architect and ask, but when I look at this, I think it is in reference to, we have our lot there, that existing sidewalk there, I'll ask them.
Because actually, if I just look at this, if I, I'm not gonna be able to see this, but if I just continue the inside arc of the green, that little green area, and I just follow that arc of the curve, of the curb, I mean, the sidewalk lines up without any particular transitioning, if you just bring this across like this, there's the sidewalk. So then you're brought onto the sidewalk gradually, as opposed to, I'm just imagining blind people, elderly people, all that stuff, all of a sudden discovering that they're putting a tree.
I will ask, I don't know if it has to do with the fact that a portion of that sidewalk is pre-existing, so they're matching what's pre-existing rather than changing it, I'll ask.
Okay, here's a little markup, if you see what I mean.
What does O-H-S-W stand for?
I don't know. What does O-H-S-W stand for?
O-H-S-W?
That's what's right around that area, where sort of it would be a curb cut, says O-H-S-W.
That is an excellent question, I will find out.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a green space of, of building the property?
I know there is a green space there, because there's a building to the right. I will find out what O-H-S-W is, and I will ask about the arc.
No, there's this condominium, oh, oh, I see.
Well, we'll do that.
No, because it's on builder's pavement.
No, it's in the builder's pavement, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Notation.
Doesn't show a building in that area, it just shows that all open. Okay, moving right along.
No, no, and those are, those are questions, and I will ask.
Okay.
There was a question regarding the zoning analysis, and there are questions around the side here in the front yard, and I reached out to the architect yesterday, didn't receive a response back.
Okay.
But I do understand the question that was raised with respect to side yard, and when you have adjacent side yards in the 13-foot figure, and then needing to provide, I'll ask them to review it, and also, what we'll do is, we'll amend the zoning analysis also, I realize that the required column wasn't in there, we'll add that into the zoning analysis. And then with respect to the front yard and the depth, the two lots adjacent in that measure also.
Right, okay, good.
So, we'll definitely check on those two issues. With respect to the waterfront lots and any zoning requirements, I also reach out to them to ask about that. The one thing I will note, though, is that there is a note about waterfront requirements on the latest set of plans, on the site plan, about it complying in the bottom left of the site plan. I don't know if that's the extent of provisions that apply.
On the site plan, or the builder's pavement?
The proposed site plan, that was submitted, the most recent submission, which would have been May, May 23rd, I think?
And it says, shall comply with...
It's applicability of waterfront public access area, applicability of visual corridor requirements, and then, if they are in lock coverage on waterfront blocks. So they did, they did do an analysis on the site plan, it wasn't put on the zoning analysis form, as it's not.
Okay, because there are, not to say that this project comes up against them, but there are a lot of places where there are side yard requirements, and front yard requirements, and rear yard requirements, sometimes they just send you back to the chapter for the related use, right? So they'll send you back to the art district regulations. But there's no acknowledgement that they went there, and then they realized it didn't apply, and so they go to the next. I mean, a thorough zoning analysis should make reference to both sections.
So, in conjunction that when we get the confirmation of the side or in the front yard, I ask them to look at the waterfront issues too, and either provide a narrative explaining what they did, or changing things, or...
No, not a, not a narrative, just go through the chart and add the sections.
The sections, okay, sure.
You know, Article 6, Chapter 4, Section whatever, whatever, has to do with side yards.
Okay.
You know, and so that way, you acknowledge that everyone was looked at, and then maybe it sent me to 2345, but maybe it didn't, right?
Okay, 100% we can do that. That, community board, DOT. Now, with respect to DEP, the letter that was provided by DEP requested one of two things, either a provision of the easement corridor within Shore Boulevard, or modification of the drainage plan. We're going to submit these records, this plan here, we'll submit and we'll provide an explanation, but we believe in this instance, that DEP's request is superfluous, and doesn't make sense based on the existing lines that are already in place, and that the drainage plan modification isn't necessary or appropriate in this case, which follows, in the previous grant, no drainage plan modification was required by the board. And I realize this is a different application, but when this site came before the board before, it wasn't an issue. Now, to, if you look at the color-coded map that we provided, and we'll, we'll adjust this as needed when submitted, the areas that were highlighted in blue are actually water. So Shore Drive, for actually, I would say, 75 to 90% of its existence in this area is all underwater, there's really only a few portions of Shore Drive that are above ground, one, where our property is, and then the neighboring lot where the condominium is, and then way to the north. So it's really, Shore Boulevard is realistically never going to be built because it's underwater.
Correct.
There are currently, within the third sheet that I showed was the drainage plan, it took some time to get this drainage plan and coordinate it, because a lot of the streets that are shown on the drainage plan are underwater, but there, it's our understanding from DEP that there are three lines that they're concerned with. Within Shore Drive, there are these proposed sanitary sewer, proposed storm sewer that run with the arc of Shore Drive, and then there is another extension, which I tried to note with the offshoot, that runs from Clarence, and it would lead towards the existing five-story condominium. First of all, with respect to that offshoot, its mapped distance doesn't even reach the lot in question, and that lot already has another sewer line that they've connected, so there's no, there's no purpose to that extension, and it, even if it was built, it wouldn't reach the properties, so it's a, it's a superfluous line, it doesn't, it doesn't serve any purpose. And then the lines that exist within Shore Boulevard have been replicated and duplicated already, because there are existing sewer lines that are in use within Clarence and Schley. So those curved lines, which, again, 75% of them would be underwater, also serve no purpose, because any lot that they're touching already has existing lines that are there. So, in DEP's request to ask us to provide the corridor, that's first of all, not possible based on our plan, but it's also not realistic, because these lines will never be built. Then also, as far as the modification of the plan, we just find it not necessary in this case, or not an appropriate request. Unlike other, you know, applications we have before the board, like the Hook Creek applications to reference that, in those instances, we are seeking to modify the drainage plan, because the lines in question do need to have alternatives provided based on what we're constructing. In this instance, these lines would serve no purpose, they're superfluous, and therefore, modifying them as far as the drainage plan doesn't make sense, because changing them to provide alternates is nonsensical, because the alternates already exist. So we are going to submit paperwork and ask the board to review this, and the board is lead agency, can make its determination, we believe that in this particular instance for this application, considering the waterfront location, that DEP's request is not appropriate at this time.
Well, I mean, this is, this is really a clear drawing that explains the situation, as opposed to the other drawings that were received, because I have to say that, for the longest time I'm sitting, where the hell is Shore Boulevard supposed to even go?
I agree.
Right? And so, I'm not sure, but it took a long time to figure out, like, comparing to the topo map.
Right.
Where's Shore Boulevard? Where's, where's Schley? You know, you can't even find it, so what I was gonna suggest was that DEP may not, when they're looking at the drawings, understood all of these subtleties, but I think this drawing's super clear, it shows what the existing mains are, and how these new houses will connect to them.
Right.
And, and other than the main perhaps not being large enough, which I don't know anything about, that's the only reason that maybe DEP is asking for something, so, so, you know, maybe you need to address that kind of a situation.
And I apologize, it took a little bit longer than expected to do this, because, as we noted, the drainage plan, so many of those streets are underwater, and trying to figure out and coordinate with this plan, but we did get this plan together, we have this, we'll make sure it's part of the record, we'll make sure it's forwarded to DEP, allow them to review again, and our hope is that DEP, upon review, will change your position, and if not, then we'll present the case to the board and allow the board to review this. But, as I said, we truly believe that the lines referenced here in this small little area are extraneous, and don't need to be preserved or relocated, because they already have been relocated with the existing lines that are in Clarence.
So, and, and the reference to proposed storm sewer, that's what DEP is requiring?
That's, that's our understanding, that they said that they wanted within the bed of Shore Drive, I don't have, I don't know if I have their letter handy, but it was like, provide either the 35-foot easement corridor, which is a standard request, when it's in a mapped street, mapped on the street, or to remove them from the map, or amend the drainage plans, you can provide alternatives.
Okay.
That provide access.
Right, okay.
That's what they're...
So I would, just as a recommendation for clarity, proposed storm sewer looks like that's what you're actually proposing to install.
That's a good point, okay.
So this would be instead DEP recommended sewer, or something like that?
They'll call it plan, or plan sewer, something like that, we'll change the term.
Something, so it doesn't, because right now, it looks like I'm supposed to IDP, I'm supposed to approve that proposed storm sewer line, and I think you don't want them to do that.
We maybe call it theoretical storm sewer.
Yeah, but, whatever, but make it clear that it's not what you're proposing to install, otherwise, they'll be reviewing a different thing.
Right.
Right?
We will do that.
Okay, any other comments on the board? No? Any comments from the audience, public? Okay, so, yeah, so you have mostly this DEP thing to deal with, right?
Correct, and the zoning, yeah. So, I don't expect that the zoning review would take long.
No.
The DEP response, we have the bulk of it done, so that wouldn't take very long, we could get that submitted to the board. We could, I mean, again, we're flexible with the board's schedule, but we could realistically submit our materials within two weeks.
Okay, so then DEP needs their review time, what is that?
I don't really know, this department.
Ah, okay. Okay, 60, well, anyway, we don't have the hearings available until December anyhow, so that probably works, that gives them more than 60 days to respond, right? And then it gives you time to respond back, we could even maybe move this to January, that way you have a time to keep your argument going with DEP.
For this particular one, December would be better, if possible.
December 12?
Okay, so hearing December 12.
So...
And we'll, we'll submit as soon as possible, I'm gonna say we can submit it.
Okay, November 22nd is the last, that's for the zoning drawings, but DEP, you need to get that to them right away.
All right, so November 22nd zoning, and we'll get the other materials in.
Right, okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 14, 2017-143 and 144A, 25-32 and 25-30, 44th Street, Queens.
Good morning, Jennifer Kim, on behalf of the applicant NYC Department of Buildings. Per yesterday's executive session, it was noted that the board was prepared to go forward with the adjournment that was requested by both respondent owners, to give them time to cure the issue. At this time, DOB has no objection to the adjournment.
Okay, great. Okay, so, that's the question is, I don't know if you'll know this, because this isn't, this is a plan examiner kind of a question, but how long before we might know that they've successfully cured the condition, and then could withdraw the, the appeal would be withdrawn?
So, yes, so I would have to go back to the Queens Plan Examiner, who reviewed the application, so the application is approved, because this is a, essentially, a new CO that has to be issued, they would have to do an inspection, make sure that they are going to use it as a two-family rather than a three-family, and after that, then we can, then they will sign off on the whole job.
So, so they've approved the, DOB has approved the application?
Yes.
Now you're waiting for the work to be done to bring it back?
Right, yes.
Okay, so that could take a long time.
Yeah, I can go back to the Plan Examiner and give him, and ask him what the timeframe will be, they are aware that this case is in front of the ESA, and so I told them to keep us notified of any changes that happen, but I'll go back today and give them a call.
Okay, it's just that in terms of us setting an adjournment, I'm thinking a long time from now, because the work has to be done, and then scheduled for inspection, and as we know, that takes a long time. So...
When was the application approved?
September 21st.
Yeah. And do you know whether they pulled a permit?
No, I believe that for, I have to go back and ask the Plan Examiner, but I believe for jobs such as this one, they don't need to pull a permit, because there's no, since they're just changing the use from a three-family to a two-family, all they have to do is fix whatever they have in, whatever, or they want to sort of not use the family use for.
Well, presumably, if it's three, it's got a kitchen?
It would be the cellar, I believe, that she, the architect said that they were going to move out, so I believe right now that there's a stove there, I'm not sure if there is an actual room that's in the cellar, but in fact, I would have to go back to the Plan Examiner.
So, in the interest of not setting the calendar too far ahead or too soon, do you think you might be able to make a phone call to the examiner and just find out, like, what's the scope of the work, and then we take this on second call?
Sure, I can make a call to the Queens Borough Borough Commissioner and see if he can give me an answer to this.
Right, what's the scope of the work?
Sure.
You know, if it's just removing a stove and a, I don't know, a sink in the cellar and a thing.
Capping a line.
Capping a line, that can be done literally in a day, but let's just, in reality of New York, it's a month.
Sure.
So that way, we wouldn't have to hold this up for a long time, and it's sort of a cloud on our calendar, on your calendar. on our calendar, on your calendar, and on the property, right?
Okay.
Okay. Great, so second calling this.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, decision items, item number 15.
Oh, oh, right, okay. That's for this 44th Street, right? Yeah, okay, please.
So there are two, so this, there are two properties, it's 2532 44th Street and 2530 44th Street. So the one that we were just discussing was 2532 44th Street, where they were going to amend the CO back to...
Oh, great.
Yes.
Oh, wait, 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 okay. This is 2532 you're talking about?
Yes, 2532 44th Street, calendar number 143A. And this is where the architect had applied to amend the CO. The attorney here is for 2530 44th Street. This is when they actually sent a request for pre-application meeting to file for new variants, and I'm sure she can explain that to you.
Okay, so this is something I don't think any of us were aware of. We thought both were being cured in the same way.
No, no.
So we haven't reviewed anything about this case.
Okay.
Okay, right.
They should be heard separately.
Yes.
They shouldn't be heard together like that.
Yeah, so we, the letter that we received from the architect, I guess, was, I'd like to adjourn this because I'm going to bring it into compliance. Done. And then we received nothing else from anybody else indicating what's happening independent of that, so, okay.
Actually, I have to say, it was not clear whether the violation was with both the houses or it was just with one of them, because the documentations that we got, at least that we have on file, seems to be only 232.
So it was the same violation for both houses, so there's sort of semi-attached houses on the street?
Right.
Yeah, so it's the same violation for both. The architect back then, was the same architect that issued both certificates of occupancies. I believe that the attorney has sent the packet for a request for a new variance or pre-application meeting sometime last, some early this month, September 5th, and that's how I, we received a copy in our office.
That's for 2530?
Yes.
Okay.
So we had filed two separate applications, actually, and...
Yeah, they have two applications.
Okay. Okay, so we're still in a small state of confusion, but let's hear from the architect.
Lisa Orantia.
Or Lisa. Who do you represent?
Good morning. Lisa Orantia from Acre Men LLP, and our firm represents the owner of 2530 44th Street.
2530, okay.
So both buildings received variances for reduced side yard. The neighbor building that you were discussing earlier, 2532 44th Street, is apparently intending to come into compliance by returning back to the original condition under the variance. The client that we represent seeks to legalize by amending the variance to allow for a three-family And I apologize for the confusion. I did speak to Tony Matias about requesting a postponement of hearing and letter. She said it wasn't necessary I would appear today. And we do have our September 5th letter asking for a pre-application meeting with the board, which she said would happen sometime after today's hearing.
Okay.
And, sorry, I've also been in touch with the DOB attorney and didn't receive an objection to the postponement.
No, so that's the part that we're, continue to be confused about. So on the one hand, there's not your client's property who will remove the third unit and be in compliance with the C of O. Then you're requesting an adjournment as well?
Right, we'd like to postpone while we seek a variance to come into compliance that would allow the C of O to remain in place for three-family.
You're by amending their variance. Yeah, yeah, I see. Okay. Interesting. Just curious, can you just describe what the situation is here? Because we, again, we thought it was adjourned, we thought DOB was going to remove its objection eventually once the ult was accepted and signed off. So we didn't read anything. So where is the unit that's needing to be legalized?
The additional unit is in the basement of 2530.
In the basement or the cellar?
Basement.
Okay. And I'm listening, I'm speaking to a former counsel of DOB, so it's a basement, not a cellar?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And drawings have been submitted and all that sort of stuff with respect to this application?
Well, in this case, there was a permit issued and a C of O issued for the three-family occupancy, so there are no new plans other than whatever would be necessary to legalize the condition.
And so the history on the site was, it received a variance for side yards from the board for a two-family.
Right.
But somehow or other, drawings were filed for a three-family, and this is not a district where you can have a three-family? Is that the issue?
Well, just to go back, 1979 variance allowed two-family with a reduced side yard. Then in 2002, there was a permit issued for a conversion to allow the three-family.
There was a DOB permit?
DOB permit, and the applicant mistakenly did not go back to the board to seek permission to make that conversion, and DOB issued a C of O for the three-family, which now they're seeking to correct. That was in 2003 that they got the C of O for three-family.
I understand the concept now, okay.
And the current zoning does permit three-family?
That's right, the density is allowed.
And the variance, Joe, was just for a reduction in side yards? It wasn't for use for two-family and a one-family district previously or something like that?
The relief was for the side yard.
Only side yard.
But it, of course, acknowledged that it was for the purpose of a two-family, and there was a restrictive declaration recorded that specifies two-family.
Restrictive declaration. Interesting.
Yeah, it's one of the conditions of the 1979 variance.
I wonder why that one? Okay. All right, thanks. And then the architect wanted to speak, is that correct? Or the owner, the owner for this building? There was another speaker for this site, right?
My name is Antoni Pusic, I dialed it for 2532 44.
Oh.
The other...
Yeah, we need to separate these. Because we're extremely confused, okay?
My client is accepting the revocation, and we filed an alteration one, as the building required alteration, the alteration one was approved, and now we're going through the final paper.
Okay, so then you're the one who would know how much work physically needs to be done in the basement? That's what we're talking about, right? How much work physically needs to be done in the basement to bring this into compliance?
Okay, according to the original approved plan, two-family, the only difference is the cooking, the stove.
Okay.
Remove, cap and remove. Cap and remove the stove. The rest is all the same, exactly the same.
Okay.
I have the approved plan, which was approved for two-family, and now we are going into...
Back to that.
Yep.
So, in one day or even one hour...
This is vibrating.
Oh, okay. In one day or even one hour, that's really not good. I'll stand back here. We'll be able, you'll be able to have someone go in as soon as, you don't need a permit, this is for no work, right? I'm turning this off.
Well, we need a plumbing permit.
Oh, you need a plumbing permit?
Yeah, because it's a gas, a gas, a gas, yes.
Even to cap a gas stove, you need a plumbing permit?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, so how much time do you think? You have any idea?
Paperwork and work, and I would say two months, a month and a half to two months to obtain the new, to restore to the original certificate of...
Okay. So I think we need to separate these into two separate applications.
So for the vote sheet, we'll put them?
Right. Okay, so this one we could put on for continuation in three months, something like that, is enough time?
And this is 2017-143A?
This is 25-32 44th Street.
Correct.
Would be... 143, okay.
143.
I'm sorry, we're putting it on for...
We're going to put this on for, which is better, the end of December 12th or January?
December 12th is fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So all that has to happen by December 12th is you need to have demonstrated to DOB, maybe that's not enough time, DOB needs to inspect, I think, is what we heard, right? So that might not be enough time for you to go do the work and DOB inspection, right?
Correct, yes.
So, Jan, or maybe later in January, January 23rd?
Yeah, you're going to have the holidays.
Yeah, because there's holidays, you're not going to get, you'll be inspected probably during...
So January 23rd?
Yeah, January 23rd. That sounds like it'll be enough. And maybe you could even go in with a photograph to the Plan Examiner and show that the stove is removed and it's capped, and that might be enough, right?
If I may, I would like to ask you, I would like to ask you, my client has a handicapped son, which lives on the, in the basement floor now, has been living there since. Now, to ask permission to continue living there with a declaration, is that going through the board or through the Building Department?
Building's department, yeah.
Okay.
And is there a submission date for this? Or is there a submission date?
Oh, no, actually, it's that they, he has to have gotten DOB's sort of blessing by January 23rd.
Okay.
Which maybe could be done if, short of an inspection, if DOB would be willing to look at photographs to show that the work was done, and because the inspector can't get out there, I don't know. I don't want to interfere with DOB process, but maybe that's a way to speed it up, right? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Back to... Now, back to the other one.
2530.
Yeah. So 2530, on the other hand, we need to set this far in the future because they're going to be potentially applying for a variance. We don't know, because without a pre-app meeting, we have no idea whether it's a good idea. Okay. I don't know what to exactly say on this. We could just say, put it on for the same date, if that's not too confusing? Not too confusing?
Sure.
Put it on for the same date, January 24th?
January 23rd.
23rd, sorry, I'm wrong here. And then you'll have a way forward or backwards, depending on which way it is. Okay?
I was going to ask if you could take it off calendar?
We don't, we don't do that anymore.
Okay, okay.
We learned that things rock and roll.
Right, okay. So the date for...
January 23rd?
That's continued hearing?
Continued hearing, and there really isn't a submission.
It's status, right?
It's a status report, right?
Carla, is it postponed or continued?
Thank you.
Postponed or continued?
So these were not adjourned?
No, no, it wasn't adjourned.
So both were continued?
Yeah.
No postponement, okay. So, we're now on the zoning calendar. Decision item, item number 15, 330-14BZ, 1746 East 21st Street, Brooklyn.
Moshe Friedman standing in for Lyra J. Oldman. Yeah, we know.
Sorry.
I don't want to commit anything more unfortunate. Yeah, yeah, I know. Okay. Hi, sorry.
Hi.
Just discussing calendar for the public, nothing...
Lyra asked for October 31st, the possible date. They're just on the verge of getting this cleaned up in the DOB.
Right, but we have a very full calendar, so November 21st is the best I can offer, right? That's the one.
Okay.
Fewer cases.
Thank you. I mean, you do what you have to.
Yeah, thank you.
So November 21st? Okay. No, deferred.
Today's deferred position.
It's deferred, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Continued hearings, item number 1656-2BZ, 317 DeHill Road, Brooklyn, and item number 171-96BZ, 600 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Stuart Klein, Klein-Slowick for the application. As I said in my submission, I apologize for the, my tardiness in getting it to you. It was as complete as I could put together prior to the hearing. There are certain matters that are still owed to the board. One is in a letter from the alarm installer indicating the type of tests he gives and the frequency of the tests. We have to conflate plans A, B, and C into a single plan. Mr. Pennar was doing that before he left for holiday, but that should be submitted very, very shortly. You wanted Mr. Rothkrug to amend the worst-case scenario application. He did that, and I believe he submitted something this morning by email. That change was made.
Did he submit it to us, or...
I don't know if he submitted it to me. I received it, I thought it might have been sent to you. I just looked in my computer. I spoke to him last night, he said he was going to be submitting it. So...
Todd.
Todd Dale from Rothkrug Inspector. It was submitted not to your office, not to the board yet, but to City Planning. We'll get it to the board.
Okay. We need to see a copy because we're the ones who actually know what's going on.
Understood.
City Planning is just like taking, taking their word for it.
Nope, understood. First step was getting it to City Planning.
We also owe you Mr. Pennar, who's not here, and the gentleman who runs the catering house. When we scheduled this hearing today, I did not know of their schedules, I apologize for that, so they could not be here today. I had put in a request for an adjournment last week. I was told we would still go forward with the hearing, and I submitted...
There are no adjournments for compliance?
I appreciate that, yes.
Ever? Okay, understood.
Nor should there be.
Right, but, well, you requested an adjournment, so I'm telling you, there are no adjournments.
Take a shot.
Okay. That means no.
I noticed the, I was watching yesterday, and I saw that the Cornell Doctrine has been expanded, so maybe there were changes on the adjournments for compliance hearings, I don't know. But that's where we stand. They will be here next time, Mr. Pennar and the caterer. And if you have any questions, I did submit also the Mr. Pennar's inspections, which were mended. The inspections, notices themselves were mended, then assigned and sealed, and they indicate that he actually conducted the inspection, and they were submitted on September 20th.
Okay.
So if there are any other questions?
So, this might be a Todd question, actually, with respect to, all right, so the reasonable worst case was submitted, even though it's Mr. worst case was submitted, even though it's representing the scope of the project, and what is it, the EIS is in, is being prepared, is that?
That, I believe I submitted a letter from Hiram Rothkrug indicating that the Department of City Planning had approved this preliminary submission, and is allowing him to go forward with the environmental study.
And I guess, you know, part of the problem here is that, I know Todd Dale comes to these, but it's not his application, so he's only relaying information from his office, right? We really do need to have Mr. Rothkrug attend these hearings, so we can find out what's the progress at City Planning and the conversations that they've had, because Todd wasn't there, so it will be, that's called hearsay, right? So, or telephone, you know, depending on how, which way you want to go. And so, I'm trying to understand, is there was this statement made in the reasonable worst case scenario and in the U-LR application about this, this site coming back to the board for a variance to enlarge the building? First of all, the variance was, application was withdrawn, it is not pending, all right?
That's correct.
And second of all, we were under the, under the understanding that, that this site would now move to the city planning process outside of the board's purview, so we would never have to deal with it again, because, and to let City Planning decide what the appropriate zoning is for the district. So, and I, I'm not understanding why that didn't happen, that was the original deal.
I, I spoke to Adam last night, and he explained to me that the request to zoning change would not address, I believe, front yard issues.
Well, but why is that, front yard issues, there, the proposal is to expand, make the building very large.
Right.
Right? So, it's not a front yard question, it's a site development question.
Once again, I, I spoke, once this came up yesterday, I called about him, I spoke to him about eight o'clock last night, he told me that there was, under the current zone that the Department of City Planning is willing to discuss with him, it would not allow for the front yard situation as it stands now. I'll expand on that.
What do you say, what do you say about front yard situation?
I believe that there's a front yard problem, is that correct? Side yard?
The building is already, exceeds the floor area ratio by, I forget, a month.
Okay, there was, I, once again, I only spoke to him for a couple of moments, there was a yard issue that he said we would have to return, I'll clarify that.
All right, so here's the deal, from now on, Mr. Rothkrug has to attend these hearings, as do the other representatives from the school, caterer, and so on, because we have to know what's going on, and no more excuses, they know about these, these hearings months in advance, so they all have to attend. I mean, I'm sure Mr. Rothkrug thinks, well, because Todd's here, he doesn't have to attend, but he needs to, because he's the only one who's knowing, who knows what's going on at City Planning, okay?
Including City Planning.
So, this is annoying, but, to make sure that things keep moving, this is, I'm just putting this in perspective, this is very painful for the board, this has been in compliance hearings for a year, and the building continues to be out of compliance, right? It's been out of compliance since the early 90s, right?
I believe the original grant was 2003.
No. It's been operating as catering facility since the 90s, we can see that.
I wouldn't know.
No, you wouldn't, no, unless you just simply went online and handled it.
Actually, I did, I did go on the, the site that you referred to yesterday, and to tell you the truth, after about a half an hour, I couldn't find it. I think you mentioned P interest, and I went up on that.
P interest, yeah.
Yeah, and I couldn't find it.
Oh, well.
It, it, probably something I did wrong.
Yes, okay. Any comments from anyone about this? Because, you know, this compliance hearing, when something's out of compliance, what? Right, and it's not going anywhere, and, right, so the, the, yeah. No, anybody wants to comment? It's just frustrating, but my, my real inclination is to just deny the whole thing and say it's out of compliance, but you're in some sort of a state of deep City Planning, which, by the way, is not curing the entire situation, the, because, again, a variance application here is not welcome, and the deal was, it would not come back, so you have to remove that from your clients' thinking. If you can't get City Planning to agree to it, the board won't agree to it, why won't City Planning agree to it? Because it won't fit with the neighborhood character. So, that's, right? All right, I'm just gonna put this on again, on December, ninth December.
What is the timeline of the review of the reasonable worst case and the application?
Once again, do you have any idea?
That's what I need to know.
Yeah, I don't know.
They don't know, that's how they come here.
That is a critical part of this milestone.
Yeah. Because when we started this year ago, yeah.
Can you put it on second call? Can you call up City Planning? Can you call up?
I could call up Adam, certainly, sure.
Hiram and find out what's the timeline? Because there is, this is on a set clock right now. Once you have submitted the reasonable worst case, there is a certain amount of turnaround period by which City Planning has to respond.
I'll find, I'll find the dates.
If you could please give us more update as to when?
I'll do that right now.
DCP is required to respond back, and have they received it, what's the feedback, all of that? That would be helpful, that would give us maybe some ideas to when to set the next hearing?
Yes, right. We also have a representative from the neighbor here, so let her speak, okay? All right, so we're gonna listen to the neighbor's rep, and then put it on for second call.
Laurie Schultz for Richard Klass for Dayhill Realty LLC, excuse me. We don't have anything to add, I was asked here by the client to continue to monitor the case.
So, did your client tell you how the site around it is being maintained and so on?
Not, not at this time, I don't have anything to report. It was, I was told that it's status quo.
Status quo. Status quo could be a bad status quo or a good status quo, that's why it would be helpful the next time you come to tell us how?
Well, it's on for second call, maybe they?
Yeah, yeah, maybe you could call, that's a good idea, the, the client, maybe you could call your client and ask them how the property surrounding and the parking situation is, because those were the principal complaints.
Right.
Okay?
I will.
If you can just ask.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Klein, also, what's going on with the parking lot for?
As I said in my letter, we are still negotiating, we have, we're there for another nine months or 10 months, we're negotiating, it's my, I anticipate that we'll have a long-term lease by the next hearing, that's my hope.
And right now, what's going on?
Right now, we have a location around the corner, it's about 300 feet away, it's good for 50 cars. I previously submitted overhead pictures, giving a location of it relative to 317, and explained the protocol that was going on.
Okay, and how, how much longer is that lease good for?
I think it's good until May of 2018.
Okay, thanks.
I'll be back.
So, Michelle, the issue is, right now, they have a parking site off-site, that's supposed to be housing 50 cars, probably can fit more with the valet parking, it's supposed to be having an appreciable difference on the parking situation during events. We're aware that five nights a week, let's see, there is an event there for 400 people or more, so I don't know how much of an impact that the spaces is actually having on quality of life there, so we really do need to hear from your client, okay?
Well, while it was, I believe when you were looking at it, it was according to the internet that you had looked up, it was five nights a week, I think the actual average?
No, not the internet, it was your architect's submission.
Okay, but I, but I think the total over the year is about 160, something along those lines.
Well, August was a really busy month, it was five nights a week, so.
No, well, once again, it, yeah, but I'm saying it averages about 160 a year.
But I, but as a person who lives, lives next door to it, you're experiencing the five nights a week when it's five nights a week.
I appreciate that, and, and as I said before, I have never, the, the next door neighbors have all of my numbers, I have not received in the past months, so I suspect it's being done properly. Do you have an answer?
Todd Dale again, 45 days is the estimate for the review of the reasonable worst case scenario.
Oh.
Submission.
From the date of submission?
From, today, because it was submitted today.
It was submitted today.
Because the revised one that was submitted?
The revised one, and the revised one that removed reference to variance application, just to clarify, so 45, estimate is 45 days.
And then what happens?
Then they get the reply back, and are given the, the next step as far as the review process, so that's.
So, if we are asking for the reasonable worst case to be revised, that is removing the, that means 45-day will start from that correction period?
Just today.
No, it was, the corrected, the corrected one?
Oh, you corrected that?
That does not reference the variance?
Okay.
Was submitted this morning, still to be submitted to the board, but it was submitted this morning, so it should be roughly 45 days from today's submission.
Okay. And then we'll find out what happens next. So, 45 days, and we'll find out then, if we set this for December, we'll find out what happened, but we'll also do, make our own phone calls. So, we're gonna be in touch with City Planning to find out what's really going on, and to talk to them about what's really going on at the site, so that the reasonable worst case scenario can be corrected to respond to what's the reality on the site as opposed to what they're being, okay? No, no aspersions cast on Mr. Rothkrug, he's just not involved in this crazy site. Okay? Okay, crazy illegal site, okay? All right. Hello? Yeah, speakers, are there other speakers on this? Okay, so let's set this for continued on December 12th, with, please, submissions are due when they're due, not, you know, not, no excuses, no, I'm sorry, we didn't realize the schedule, they're due when they're due. Understood?
Yes.
So, with a submission due on?
I thought you said late, late December.
December 12th is our last hearing.
Okay.
November 22nd submission.
Item number 18, 161-15BZ, 621 East 216th Street, The Bronx.
Good afternoon, Manzai Anadi, on behalf of the applicant, I just have one revised document to hand to the board that was submitted this morning, it's the revised aerial view and rendering, which matched the revised proposed building.
Oh, a rendering? So, the prior version will be voided? I never said to submit this.
Is that?
Is that little thing on the side, right? Over here.
And then this was the setup?
Right, okay, is that little part being drawn?
Yeah, yeah, and that's been there to date.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, this is a really great improvement, thanks to everybody in the congregation and architects for making those corrections. We think that is a much more respectful relationship to the neighbors, to the rear and side, which I hope depends on your orientation, whether it's your rear or your side. Oops, nobody can hear me all this time?
So, you can get a response.
Okay. Did, any other comments?
No.
No? Okay, and thank you also for being so responsive in terms of us understanding the program better, the, yeah, I just.
I wanted to say for the record, the community board, you saw the recommendation, it hasn't changed since 2015, but I received no comments.
Okay.
On the lease.
Okay, and we're okay with environmental stuff? There was nothing, right? Okay, excellent. So then, are there any speakers on this? No speakers. So then, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chairwoman Mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
And, as I mentioned yesterday, a motion to grant on condition, and this is something we talked about a while ago, which is about the shuttle van, okay, so, condition approval on operation of a shuttle van service that picks promotioners up at the subway station.
Yes.
Chairwoman Mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Item number 19, 179-15BZ, 129 Taffey Place, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Moshe Friedman. We listened, apparently you were very quick yesterday, so by the time we got here, you were finished, but we did listen and have some discussions, so I'm gonna go through what I understand, and then we'll have any discussion that I needed. First of all, the chain of title, for some reason, you had an old one, there, it was done, and a full EDR report, which I can give in today, or I can wait till I give in the new financial.
Didn't you submit a, sort of a chart with the, yeah, that was right, okay, we saw the chart last, yesterday, without the backup, but yeah. Every deed since.
Yes, I, I like to summarize it, because if, for you guys to go through that whole EDR report is like, so I, I've summarized it over there.
Okay, I appreciate it. So, there's no common ownership, it was Mr. Gilbert in 1939 that owned a couple of the sites, but he sold it.
Nothing's in 61, so, we're fine with it, and I'd rather, I'll submit it when I submit the new financials, as did financials, Ms. Ollie Brown had a question about the roof, the roof is not being used for any amenities, it is a building department requirement of a bulkhead, and we have to have the bulkhead there, from what I understood from the financial analysis, the other buildings that he, the comps also are not using the roof, as to the rear yard, it's for the whole building, and there's access to it through the cellar, for the whole building, through the common, which is required according to laws, otherwise it's not open space, that's a zoning issue, so therefore, everybody gets to use it, and it is not, but, the first-floor apartments do have the recreation space in the cellar, so therefore, the first-floor apartments will have a different price than the other apartments. As to the other issues, I spoke to him, he said he needs a month to bring everything into, fix up all the comps and the issues that you brought up.
Okay.
You know what, I just have one more question that you could just ask him, and it had to do with the hard construction costs of the as-of-right versus the proposed. It seems like the as-of-right hard construction costs are $309 a square foot, but the proposed ends up being about $186 a square foot, and the as-of-right's supposed to be a simpler building than the proposed, so if you could just have him write a narrative as to why?
Why? 100%? No, I haven't.
I, you know, I always think that, that those are very strange numbers, the per square foot, because unlike the way the construction trades work, where they say, sheetrock costs $12 a square foot, that's how much we know, instead, what happens is they'll do the cost estimates for the whole building, then they'll divide the floor area, the gross, into the whole building cost, and they come out with a number, and so it's, it's working backwards, so obviously, it's more expensive per square foot to build a smaller building, because it's less efficiency of scale, right? And so, it's actually kind of a, it's not a real, it's not a good number in the sense that it's not arrived at in the way that, like, if you use means reports, they just tell you, building in New York costs as much a square foot, and when you tell your client, oh my God, it's gonna be expensive project, it's gonna be $500 a square foot, that's for the whole building, super generalized, right? So, I always find those numbers?
Well, they do.
Create confusion.
No, they, they did do that, it is a cost estimator who came up with all of the costs.
Right, and, but then he backs?
Right.
Backs into that dollar, that square foot cost. You could say it's not an efficiently-costed building, but it's a much smaller building, so it's always more, it's less, you still need certain systems, no matter what size building you're building, you still have to do some kind of puddings, foundations.
Right, yes, but he, he should still address it, because it is still, it's an Right, yes, but he should still address it, because it is still, it's an industrial building or a commercial one-story office building, just to get an idea of what's driving that cost per square foot, because there's some stuff there. It could be an extra-strong foundation or slab to support something that you don't need for residential, but we should see it, because otherwise, it runs counter to what we usually see, which is that those simple as-of-right buildings have lower construction cost per square foot.
I'll have Ian put in a narrative.
Right, okay.
A couple of sentences, and he'll fix up the comps and...
Okay.
Okay.
No speakers that I can think of. Okay. So then, would you say you need a month to prepare? And we're good on the air quality, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody good on the uniqueness study?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So then, we can put this on for December, is that all right?
That's fine.
Is that okay for you? Yeah. So like, December 5th or 12th? 5th would be ideal, if we can do it. 5th, okay. So December 5th, and submission on the 15th of November. There are no other seventy-two, twenty-ones on the 5th, or how many are there? I'm just concerned about...
There's...
Huh?
I have a new one.
New one, that requires financial analysis? And any other one?
There's one, there's... This would be the fourth variant.
Uh-oh. So then, that matters? Okay, sorry. And anything else that we put on since that you marked?
I have been marking them.
Oh, okay. So this, that's a decision?
That's a decision.
Okay.
But there are no, there's nothing else.
So we have one that, this one requires, this one require, oh, this one doesn't require financials. That's a new variance. So it's one, two, plus three financials. That's a lot.
Yeah, but the week before is off.
Okay. If you're volunteering, then we'll leave it there, otherwise, we'll put it on 12.
Yes, I'm volunteering.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it could be the following week, so you don't necessarily need to volunteer.
Actually, I'd prefer that they all come at once with that week off ahead of time, because that helps.
Okay. So there you go. So December 12th, I mean, December 5th, with a submission on November 15th, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This concludes the morning session of the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals public hearing.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is the zoning calendar for the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals public hearing, September 26, 2017. New cases, item number one, 2016-4169BZ, 230 Borum Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon. Frank St. Jacques for the, Sheldon Nobel PC for the applicant on this variance application. We attended yesterday's review session and heard the comments and concerns relating to the project. I'd like to address some of the comments that were raised at yesterday's review session, and reserve the majority of our response to a written submission at a later date, particularly regarding the financial analysis and the building design. Spoken with the project team, we're reevaluating the project and potential changes in response to those comments. But I will just briefly touch on some of the comments. I'll note that proof of service of the initial filing was resubmitted yesterday. We've performed initial accurate research, and I think that we'll be able to show with sufficient evidence that the adjacent properties were in separate ownership. We'll provide the IBZ map. Just note that the general boundary near the premises is Bushwick Place to the west, and then midway between Borum Street and Johnson Avenue to the north, and then further to the east on Borum Street within the M12 district. Also, just wanted to touch, oh, and then with regard to the Seeker EAS comments, our environmental consultant indicated that we should have responses to those outstanding comments within about two weeks or so. So I'll follow up with them and make sure that those are submitted, both for the, I believe it's all related to DEP comments. With respect to the comments on the uniqueness finding, we'll evaluate the uniqueness study that was submitted. I think that we can make that more persuasive by distinguishing further some of the adjacent properties on Borum Street. I'll note that we performed a conservative estimate based on the development potential in the M11 zoning district. M11, the maximum bulk for a conforming manufacturing or commercial use is 1.0 FAR, and residential use is not allowed. So we'll evaluate the other sites on the block. It's not entirely clear what the current condition based on filed documents with the Department of Buildings is. I'll just note for 257 Borum, that's the site with the ground floor gallery and what appears to be a residential use on the second floor. Were that to be a legal residential use, it would presumably have to be an accessory caretaker's unit, subject to a size limitation. There's no jobs in biz that suggest a conversion to that use, and that the Department of Finance tax assessment for 2017 still categorizes the building as a G9 miscellaneous garage or gas station. It's not to suggest that that's, you know, that's not what's there, we realize that, but we'll find a way to fold that use and other similar uses on the block into the uniqueness study. Available to answer any questions, but again, we're really, we understand that the main concerns relating to this application are with the financial analysis and the building design, and we're looking at that.
Okay. Any other comments you want to add, anything?
No, my other comment had to do with the uniqueness finding, and they're going to revise the study, so I'm waiting to see.
Okay. And, you know, I will just note that I think the board's prior precedent supports the reading of the Court of Appeals case, Douglas and Civic Association v. Klein, that the uniqueness doesn't have to be the only uniqueness on the block, and would submit that the, we'll look at the uniqueness study a little further.
Doesn't have to be the only one, but it shouldn't be one of many, because then it's not unique, right?
Correct. It cannot affect a material change in the district zoning. I'll just note that we're at 6% within 400 square feet and 3.3% within 800 square feet. Recognize that some are on the same block, and as I mentioned, we'll further...
Not square feet, you mean a radius of 400 or eight?
Correct. Within 400 square feet of the premises at 230 Borum.
No, it's not square feet, it's 400-foot radius.
Excuse me, 400-foot radius. I apologize, I say in square feet too often. So yes, 400 feet of the premises radius and 800-foot radius from the premises.
I think the 400 square feet was about the comment about the unit sizes being quite small. I don't know if you heard that, but that goes to the financial analysis ultimately.
That's really why we're reserving our comments. I think, you know, as, obviously, you understand that the financial analysis will tie into the, any changes that are made to the building design. We heard loud and clear all the comments as they relate to height, FAR, and the unit sizes. I will just, sorry, one final note. We've been following the North Brooklyn Industry and Innovation Study very closely in our office. This site is showing, at least in the most recent publicly available data, is actually in an Area B1 Innovation District, which is more, one of their mixed-use districts, not the Area E, which is reserved for pre-existing residential uses.
You should verify with the Department of City Planning Brooklyn office. I, that's where I got the information, so I could have gotten the incorrect...
Understood. We just, it's based on the publicly available information. We have that call into DCP, and we'll follow up. It obviously supports the, our position that residential use is appropriate in this area if it's in the Area E, where residential use already exists. If there's nothing further, we'll put this over.
No, just to go back to that. So it's proposed to be in the B1 Innovation Area, where there is a proposal to rezone it to residential, is that...
No, so from my understanding, based on, I think, the framework map showing the different areas, I think it's from September 2016, there's different areas, you know, sort of primarily manufacturing, primarily residential, and then these innovation areas where they're encouraging mixed development. The map shows this specific site within, sorry, Innovation Area B1, or Area B1 Innovation District.
Right.
Our understanding of what B1 would do would be to raise the maximum FAR in the M11 district to 2.0, and reduce the parking requirement and loading requirement. Again, none of this is public. I've had sort of ongoing discussion with the Brooklyn office and with the staff member that's heading the study. I don't have as recent information as I believe you do, Commissioner Chanda, so we'll update that.
No, because if City Planning is looking, we have another application that's also in this, in this new considered rezoning, and that one is falling firmly within an area that's going, that's proposed to be rezoned to residential. So obviously, that has an effect on a determination that the proposed use is consistent with neighborhood character, right? So you really need to speak to that. If this is going to be in an area where they're going to maintain it as an M11, then you need to address why this residential use wouldn't sort of throw off the entire sort of purpose behind their rezoning effort, where they're really looking deeply at what are the properties and how the properties are used.
I understand, I absolutely agree. I think it would be more appropriate to fall within the, one of the residential areas, just based on the existence, the existing bill character of the areas is primarily residential. We note in our paper that 55% of the area is residential, and further break it down by the block. It's a majority residential on both the north and south sides of Borum Street, adjacent to the premises.
Okay, so, and in that respect, you should reach out to City Planning and ask them why they're not considering sort of essentially legalizing these existing uses.
Absolutely. And I certainly can't speak for City Planning, or will confirm what their current thoughts are on this area. I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Chanda that this is, again, more appropriately within the residential area. These, the maps that I'm looking at are the publicly available maps that were made available in about fall of last year.
Right. No, but my question is not to just agree, I could agree or whatever, but to find out what's going, why City Planning is viewing that as an area that should continue to be M1, if it's, if as you say, it's predominantly residential.
Well, I just wanted to say, looking at the radius diagram, although the block fronts are, have residential use on them, directly behind those lots are industrial uses.
Right, directly behind, but they could split the block, for example.
Right, no, no, but I'm thinking to myself that that could be a reason why they're not supporting residential, because it would inhibit the growth of the industrial that's literally right on the rear lot line.
You should confirm it with the City Planning, because what I had gathered was the one, and what Commissioner Ollie Brown is referring to, that section, that would be identified as an innovation zone, and the block along the Borum would become, would be residential.
Residential.
And so it would be like a little bit of a sort of kind of a mapping, because these buildings already have kind of the office spaces and things that are more akin to innovation zone. That's what I was told, and, but you should definitely confirm it, those documents.
We will, and we'll include further analysis in our papers.
I think I've spoken to Corinne.
Okay.
Corinne Wood.
Is that Corinza Wood, or Corinne Manning? I can speak to them.
Okay, just when we refer to somebody by their first name for the record, I want the last name, if we can do that, yeah. No, if you know, if you know, you may not know. So are there any speakers on this? Okay. So, a lot of work. December's are our next available hearings. We won't put it on for the early December, because we already have too many financials. So December 12th is probably the first available. Is that...
I think that makes sense. So submission end of November?
Yeah, the 22nd of November.
That should be fine. Thank you.
Continued hearing, sorry, new cases, item number two, 2016-4276BZ, 333 Johnson Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon. Stephanie Marazzi from Slater &amp; Beckerman for the applicant. We are requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 7344 of the zoning resolution to reduce the parking requirement for new office space in connection with the enlargement of the existing building at 333 Johnson Avenue.
I just want to make a note that proof of notice of hearing was provided.
Thank you. I'll just give the projector a second.
And the community board recommendation was just submitted to us.
Great. 333 Johnson Avenue is, could you flip? Located in East Williamsburg on the northern side of Johnson Avenue between Bushwick Place and Bogart Street. It's approximately 130,000 square feet in area. Site is located in M31 zoning district, which allows an FAR of two for commercial and manufacturing uses. Office uses in an M31 district generate an accessory off-street parking requirement of one space per 300 square feet of floor area. Currently existing at the property is a building containing about 130,000 square feet of floor area, about a one FAR. It was most recently used as a warehouse and wholesale printing establishment, although it is now vacant. It will be converted to retail and eating and drinking establishment and office use. Some portions of the property are structurally unsound and will be demolished. A portion of the existing building, could you flip, will also be enlarged by about 130,000 square feet as well, which is another one FAR, by the addition of seven stories of office use on the northern portion of the site. In total, the building will contain 261,814 square feet of floor area. The parking requirement of one space per 300 square feet generates a total parking requirement of 497 spaces. If the special permit is granted, it would allow the total required parking spaces to be reduced to 279. If the special permit is granted, the 279 spaces would be located in a garage on the second story of the building, accessible by a ramp leading from Johnson Avenue. The garage would have 63 spaces at floor level in the garage and 108 spaces in double stackers. The ramp leading to the garage will be 19 feet 6 inches wide, which is wide enough to allow for entry and exit of passenger vehicles, which are a maximum of six and a half feet wide. That allows an additional six and a half feet for clearance. On February 15th, the Community Board won, voted in favor of the application, 26 to four. The client intends to pursue office tenants for the office floor space and has a letter from Jones Lang LaSalle indicating that the site should be a viable location for office space. And we have submitted a parking analysis that shows that the maximum accumulation for parking will be 141 spaces, which would leave a capacity of 138 spaces free. So we attended a review session yesterday and heard the board's comments on the circulation and operation of the garage, and we agree that some design changes should be made. As currently designed, the garage would have an attendant booth immediately at the entrance to Johnson Avenue, where drivers would exit the car to hand off to the attendant and then walk through the courtyard to enter the building. We agree that that might present a queuing problem on Jansen Avenue, so we propose to relocate the attendant booth into the garage and have the attendant booth either directly next to a stairwell or elevator shaft, or provide a safe pedestrian pathway to get to the stairwell and elevator. The board also raised a question about the location of the garage on the second story. It's on the second story of the building to allow the ground-level courtyard to remain centered around humans and not cars. If the garage were on the first floor of the building, there would be either a blank wall on two sides of the courtyard, or a garage with a view of cars. So by lifting it up to the second story, it allows the courtyard to have entrances to the office and retail space. And the board also asked about what the as-of-right scheme would look like. If we were to provide the additional 218 cars, we would have to dig a subcellar of about 43,000 square feet, and we don't have a plan for that right now, but we know that is how it would be accomplished.
So I'm just curious how that, it's an existing building, so how do you dig a subcellar that has all of its columns, holding up the seven, well, holding up what it's got right now, and then needing to hold up more? How do you physically even do that?
I'm not exactly sure, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, so... Okay, yeah, so, yeah, talk to, speak to what kind of difficulties that would pose. Okay.
Are there any additional questions?
Okay. EEP, okay, we also had environmental issues. DEP reviewed the Phase 2 and requires a rapid CHASP. Right, so we need to take care of that?
Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay. And then also, the rapid CHASP, or let's say the Phase 2 may have not properly represented the project. It says that there's no in-ground disturbance. How in the world do you add seven stories to a building without dropping columns and buildings?
Yeah, I think that might have been a misstatement, because if we do add seven stories, then we will definitely need to drop columns, so we can fix that.
So then, the Phase 2 or something, DEP needs to be made aware that there is in-ground disturbance expected, right? I just want to make sure. Tracy, you got that, okay? Okay. Go ahead. You're going to show the whistles of the ramp. Okay, and then information about operations. So you'll explain to us, once there's a redesign, you'll provide us with information about where the car drives up to and where the pedestrian...
Where the pedestrian exits and drops off the car. Great.
Okay. Any other questions from our side? Are there any speakers on this?
I think there might be.
There's a speaker? Okay.
My name is Julia Kite, and I'm the Policy and Research Director for Transportation Alternatives. We're New York City's advocates for biking, walking, and public transportation, and I'm here to support the application by Normandy Real Estate Associates for 333 Johnson Avenue. Our mission is to, essentially to reclaim New York City's streets from the automobile and form more sustainable modes of transportation. We have more than 100,000 active supporters and committees working locally in every borough. We've also been advocates for Vision Zero, believing traffic crashes are preventable. And since our founding in 1973, our work has paved the way for changes in the transportation infrastructure, such as the growth of biking, the launch of City Bike, the implementation of complete streets. And we recognize that in addition to changing New York City's streets, we need to harness intelligent planning when it comes to real estate development in order to further promote sustainable, active transportation. And we are here to ask your support for the BSA application for the development at 333 Johnson. We support this development as an example of thoughtful planning aligned with our mission to promote safer walking and biking and to reduce dependence on private cars. This is extremely important with the record amounts of congestion we're seeing in New York City. Any kind of planning which recognizes close proximity to public transit helps in getting cars off the street by not further incentivizing parking. We hope that 333 Johnson can serve as a model to other developments if this proposal is allowed. The parking study conducted by Philip Habib and Associates, one of the most renowned city consultants, demonstrates that despite the reduction in parking spaces, the development can maintain almost 100% above the demand needed. The site is conveniently located between four train lines on the L and the JZ, and three bus lines, indicating that there's really very little need for private parking. Most people who come to this development are going to arrive by public transport, on foot, or by bike. And Normandy plans to provide 115 bicycle parking spaces, which is more than double the required amount. So we see clearly that they are thinking about transportation and how people are going to get there, which is not going to be by car. So this development represents the kind of vision that our city needs to promote in order to see Vision Zero's success and to create a more sustainable future in line with a lot of the city's own goals, such as 80 by 50, to promote a more active, sustainable transit. So on behalf of our network of members and volunteers, we encourage you to support Normandy's application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers?
I'm Samara Karasik, Executive Vice President and Chief of Staff at the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, and I am delivering testimony today on behalf of Andrew Hohn, President and CEO of the Brooklyn Chamber. The Brooklyn Chamber is a membership-based business assistance organization which represents the interests of over 2,000 member businesses, as well as other businesses across the borough of Brooklyn. The Brooklyn Alliance is the not-for-profit economic development arm of the Chamber, which works to address the needs of businesses through direct business assistance programs. We are proud to lend our support to the application before you regarding 333 Johnson Avenue. We are glad to see movement regarding this site, which has been sitting vacant for more than three years while companies in the borough need more office space in Brooklyn. The old printing company that previously occupied this site moved to Texas. That business has less than a dozen jobs. This project will feature office space, retail space, a restaurant, and a community garden. It will bring an estimated 1,000 jobs to Brooklyn. Though it is required to include 497 parking spots on-site as per the regulations, the applicants are seeking to reduce this number to 279 spots via a variance from the board. A transportation analysis conducted by a respected engineering firm indicates that only about 17.7% of employees will commute by car in comparison to the 47.4% by train and 27% by walking or biking. This site is situated close to multiple bus lines and the LNG trains, and will include 115 bike spaces to accommodate the significant amount of bike commuters anticipated. The transportation study indicates that at a peak hour, only 141 parking spaces will be needed. So even the proposed 279 available spaces will far exceed demand by almost 100%. One of the key mayoral initiatives has been Vision Zero, which aims to reduce car travel, and this project is aligned with the goals of our administration, encouraging employees to take mass transportation and bike to work. The project at 333 Johnson will be a great boost for Brooklyn, bringing desperately needed office space, contributing to significant job creation, and reducing the impact on our roads. Thank you for providing us with the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
My name is Ken Varga. I'm a board member of the North Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of Elaine Brodsky, Chair, and Paul Simulski, President of the North Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of the Board of Directors, we are pleased to support the item at 333 Johnson Avenue, which the Board of Standards Appeals is considering today. Our mission is to unite and advocate for the varied businesses of Greenpoint, Williamsburg, and Bushwick around the shared goal of improving the community's commercial landscape and stimulating the local economy. We are fortunate to count Normandy as one of our valued North Brooklyn Chamber members. Normandy's site located at 333 Johnson Avenue has been vacant for more than three and a half years. We're excited and encouraged to know that the proposal for a new building to bring life into the community is moving forward. We're increasingly hearing from our members about the strong demand for new, affordable office space in Brooklyn. More diverse companies want to settle into North Brooklyn, but doing so is possible only if additional office space, which as this plan proposes, is available. We've also been told that this project will involve over 1,000 local jobs. We're extremely supportive of jobs and the exponential economic benefit for Brooklyn's families. Normandy is seeking a variance from the Board of Standards Appeals to reduce the required number of parking spots for the project. As-of-right, they would be required to include 497 parking spots at the site, far exceeding the anticipated demand. With a variance, they will install 279 spots, which we understand, based on professional analysis, is more than sufficient to meet the needs of the proposed development. We expect this project will attract a workforce that will largely commute using public transportation and bicycle, is conveniently situated close to multiple subway and bus lines. It is important to note that Normandy will install 115 bicycle spots to support the ever-expanding New York bicycling community. The parking spots Normandy seeks through approval today, and the bicycle spots Normandy will place are far more than are expected to be used. We believe this project is a big economic win for our neighborhood and the community and the borough of Brooklyn and the city, and we encourage your approval of the variance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers? I just have a quick question. Where are the bicycle spots going to be?
Where are the bicycle spots? Do you know?
State your name, please, and take the mic with you. Take the mic, because we...
Hey, Dennis, A+I, the applicant.
Bicycle spaces are located in blue on the plan.
Really? But so are parking...
Blue boxes.
Blue boxes on the plan, okay. And does it say how many fit in each of those?
Not on this plan, but I think we could...
We don't have color-coded plans. We have simple black and white plans that don't show that.
I will have these printed for you.
Okay.
I mean, in our next submission, we're going to revise the garage, so those, I'll make sure, are in color and clearly labeled like this.
Also, the digital file that you submitted should be...
Also color. Okay, good.
Right, yes, it's very hard to read.
Okay.
Okay. And then, where's the JMZ station? Because the application only talked about the L.
It's not actually on this map, so I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't really know where it is, but I'm sure we can find it.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure you can. I'm trying to find it now, but one of the speakers stated that it's right near the JMZ line and...
Flushing?
Flushing down. Right off the page. Right off the page. So it's a little bit of a hike. But it's close to the L, but it's a little bit of a hike to the J, right? Okay. All right. So, all right, so we really have mostly, I think it's environmental issues to address, and then the corrections to the drawings to reflect how the attendant booth is going to be located, pedestrian walk, environmental issues, and, yeah, and correcting the ground disturbance comment, alerting DEP to it, not just correcting it, but with a cover letter, alerting them to the fact that there will be ground disturbance. The zoning chart also was blank, so it needs to be...
I'm sorry, I don't know how that happened, but I'll give you...
Yeah, it might be a glitch about how you fill in a PDF. Sometimes if you're using the wrong program and save the PDF, it saves as blank. Okay? Or what else? Okay, I think that covers it, right? Any other speakers on this? Okay. So, when, when? December 5th is our first available.
It's the first available? I think that should be enough time, yeah.
Okay. So even with the environmental work, though, yeah, submit as soon as possible, because it's going to take time for the agencies to review, right? DEP to review. And I don't know who's doing your rapid CHASP. Is that Habib's office? No?
No, they retained...
So somebody has to do that.
Yeah, yeah, they're already retained, and they're working on it, as far as I know.
Okay, so, once submitted, they get for review 30 days for the rapid CHASP? Okay. So then, let's just say that's submitted sometime in October, 30 days, mid-November, yeah.
So as long as we submit in October.
Yeah, you have to submit early in October, though, really, they need to get there. Otherwise, December 12th is too soon, you know? So December 12th would require submission by November 22nd for everything else, but the rapid CHASP and other responses to DEP's comments have to, the air quality has to be submitted immediately.
Immediately.
Yeah, so maybe we should make this January. I'm just thinking, it's not enough time, no? Yeah. Right? Okay, so let's move it into January, like January 23rd with a submission January 3rd.
Okay.
Because then there's holidays and...
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number 3, 2017-102BZ, 2015 East Fifth Street, Brooklyn.
Richard Lobel of Shetland Bell PC. Good afternoon. Chair, I'm joined today by Jose Ramirez of JL Ramirez Architect PC, the project architect, and Lujia, bless you, to discuss the 73622 special permit application for the property located at 2015 East Fifth Street. The application is fairly straightforward and in line with many of the board's previous grants of similar special permits. The property in question is a 40-by-100 property with an existing 3,400-square-foot single-family home, and the owner seeks to enlarge by approximately 1,400 square feet. I would note that the, most of the board's comments centered around the plans and specifically retaining existing walls. And of course, having done a number of these applications, we understand the board's requirements with regards to this being an enlargement pursuant to the rules. So I think that, as we've discussed internally, we're happy to, A, make it a little bit clearer as far as what areas of the walls are being retained and those that are not, and also to discuss an inclusion of cellar walls, which, when we looked at, I'm sorry, no, no, as far as existing to remain, right now, I think most of the cellar walls would be removed under the proposal, whereas...
I mean, cellar walls, I don't actually understand how you retain any first-floor walls without any cellar walls for them to sit on, right? So then that obviously calls into question the existence of an existing building, right? But the main thing is that cellar walls don't count as floor area, so we're concerned with the preservation of floor area, so that's everything from the first-floor joists up, right? And it's got to be a minimum of 50% of the perimeter walls and the joists maintained, right? So, yeah, and so it can't be little bits of walls that fall in a shower or a closet. It has to be actual walls that are on the exterior, which then goes to our question about the side yards.
Sure. I think probably I would just note a couple of things that were raised in the executive session, and then maybe let Jose address some of the particular questions about the walls and the yards. With regards to the, I know that the board cited the Special Ocean Parkway District regulations. The regulations that were cited by the board particularly pertain to putting you back into the residential provisions of Article 2 and the yard provisions. And so the first one, 113543, specifically allows certain straight-line extensions within the Special Ocean Parkway District. But here, kick you back to the R4A regulations for detached homes, which would be 10 feet total, 2 feet minimum, as well as an 8-foot minimum distance between buildings. And while the board questioned those measurements in the plans, we can demonstrate that they're actually, that we hold to those requirements here. Although it may not be as clear, they're clear, but we can demonstrate that to the board. And the second provision, being 113-545, discusses buildings and the ability to build to a side-lot wall line, so, which is, it basically discusses the side lot generally and allows you to abut to an existing side-lot building despite the fact that you're a, you know, that you are detached building. So we're not really taking advantage of that provision, but we can, you know, we can give a little bit more color on that with regards to the...
Well, it's only to show that you're complying with the provisions that apply in your case.
Correct.
Say, it doesn't apply in our case, we're not proposing to do that thing, but in terms of the straight-line extension, you have to show that you comply with that requirement.
Right, so there's a provision which would allow you to do a straight-line extension absent any waiver from the board, just as a right provision. We're not seeking that, we're seeking to do the, you know, we're seeking to obtain the board's waiver in order to allow for existing non-complying extensions pursuant to 73622. And so we do maintain the minimum 2 feet for the side yard, as well as a minimum 8 feet between buildings.
Wait, but so the question is, do you meet the requirement under 113, wherever it is, 543, in terms of the straight-line extension, right? Because we can't waive it, so whatever that says, you have to do at the very least that. If you need something beyond that, that we have the authority... If you need something beyond that, that we have the authority to waive, that's another thing. But we can't waive 113-543.
Okay, well, we can look more closely. I think we probably meet the requirements of the rule, but, which have to do with minimum distance and such, but, but we're happy to take a closer look. I would actually introduce Jose at this time to talk about some of the issues regarding the existing walls and the yards.
Good afternoon, Jose Ramirez, Architect. The, the building technically conforms to the side yard setbacks on the, what do you call it, the northwest, the northeast corner, we have a setback of 7 foot 4 and 3/4 on that northwest corner. On the south, on the south, I'm sorry, northeast corner, on the southeast corner, we have 3 foot 4. If you add those two up, we're actually larger than the required 10 feet on that side. So that conforms. So those yards conform. On the middle of the building, on these, on the center part, we have a setback of 2 feet, but our other setback is 9 feet. So again, we have, we're larger than the required 10 feet on that side.
This is in the proposed building?
In the proposed building, yes.
But so then, that's the part I am not understanding. If you're going to be retaining existing fabric, how are you, and by the way, I'm not sure that you can reduce the total side, a side yard is something that's considered all the way to the back, right? So if you're reducing it in a portion, that's considered a reduced side yard. So if 2 feet is what you've got on one side, and that's a different discussion than the existing fabric, but if you've got 2 feet in parts, that's the size of your side yard, 2 feet. So that means if you've got only 7 feet in a part on the north side of the house, you're not meeting the requirements.
Well, because it's an existing building, and there's a, there's an existing side yard of 7 feet, and then the other side yard is 3 foot 4, technically, that ribbon, that portion of the building complies. This is how we're interpreting it. That portion of the building complies.
So you're segmenting the building into three parts, where you're saying each, within each one of these, you're meeting that 10-foot requirement with variabilities of side yards in each one of these compartments?
Yeah, because it's an, it's an existing building, so we're looking at it as kind of like two ribbons. You have, the first ribbon is 9 and 2, the second ribbon is 3 foot 4 and 7 foot 4.
It's not open.
Because it's an existing building.
No, so here's the thing. A side yard is something that goes continuously from front to back with a minimum dimension. That's what its requirement is. So if you have to have an 8-foot side yard, it has to stay 8 feet from front, from front lot line to rear lot line. Otherwise, it's not considered a side yard. Otherwise, it has obstructions within the 8 feet, right? So what you've got is an existing, arguably complying side yard of 7 foot, whatever that is, 7 foot 4, and another one of 3 foot 4, because they are both adding up to more than 10 feet, and you're proposing to reduce a portion of the side yard to 2 feet, where a portion of your, your, your side yard is still effectively only 7 foot 4 inches. You don't break the building up into parts.
Okay, we would have to look at the definition of a side yard, just to make sure the, the actual definition-
Okay, but I'm just telling you, so the board has the discretion-
Mm-hmm.
...and reviews on hundreds of these cases, and we never break up the side yard into parts, okay? So you're just going to have to do it and not look up the definition, et cetera, because it's the board's discretion, and you need to maintain the total 10 feet throughout the side yards.
Along the entire length of the lot?
Yes. Okay, so, right.
We'd have to make an adjustment to the building-
Yes, you do.
-to comply.
Um, that's the first part. The second part of that is, by making the adjustment to the building and retaining the existing 3 foot 4 inch side yard, you'll retain more existing fabric, which is really a problem. You don't have enough existing exterior walls retained. So by making that adjustment, you may have enough. I, I don't know without doing the math.
Okay.
Okay. Um, but the other part that's super confusing is when you look at your drawings and you show these existing walls to be retained, it's frankly not believable, because you've got like a wall, and then there's this little niche, and then there's a window, I don't know, maybe it's another niche, like a little recess for a bench or something like that, and each of those are being shown as retained exterior wall, when clearly something else is going on there that puts that wall right in the way. So how in the world is that a retention of an existing wall?
Right. When we have to shift our setbacks, we'll have to adjust the, it will shift also the amount of walls that are standing.
Okay. Um, and ditto, like, just return, retaining like a little bit of a bump that frankly is right inside your closet, not believable. It can't be little bits of stuff, because for one, it's not believable that the contractor's going to keep it. He's going to think, what are you crazy? I'm not keeping this, and he's taking it out as he's doing a demolition. So these are things that actually have to be retained, or the, the special permit is void. So think carefully when you draw these things, because an inspector comes on the site and sees it missing, whole permit is void.
Understood.
Okay? Um, second floor, very specifically, is missing much in the way of existing fabric, so you need to show that. You also need to show the extent of the joists that are being retained-
Okay.
-on the drawings, you know, you can hatchet or something like that.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so by-
And to your question also about the basement, we've considered keeping some of the basement foundation walls in our resubmitted sketches, we're looking to keep the basement wall, to your point about supporting the existing walls above.
Mm-hmm. I don't know, what was your plan before?
Well, you know, you have to, you know, you have to, it's been done, you have to support, you have to temporarily support the walls, it's not that easy. It's, uh, it's difficult, you have to put in temporary supports.
Why would you do it? So that you qualify for the special permit in this roundabout sort of way, which is the whole point.
Right.
The whole idea is this is not a sham. This is an actual existing building that's retained that gets enlarged, okay?
Sure.
It's not a game, right? So, okay. All right, and then also by removing, by pulling everything into the existing side yard, you'll, that will be reducing the floor area ratio to something that's more in line with what you see on this block, which is more in the 1.07 range. You're more like at the, you're at 1.22. And then also the perimeter wall height should be measured to the bottom of the eve. I think you're still fine, but it shouldn't be measured to that-
Right.
-whatever that part's called, I forget.
And it helps you meet the findings. I'm not sure why you were going for the other one.
Well, we, we've kind of done both. We've come across with the Brooklyn DOB that they actually require up to the, the deck of the third, of the, of the third floor, the attic, and we've come across-
The floor of the attic, not the ceiling.
Yeah, we've had instances where, we've had objections where they measure to that point, but we have both, just to make sure we're covered, in case we get an objection on that.
Okay, so you should make clear for our application, because in our applic, in the 73622 language, it says, "measured at the lowest point before a setback or pitched roof begins."
Right.
Right, that sounds like the bottom of the eve to me, otherwise I don't know where the pitch roof begins.
It's, it's a, it's a Brooklyn DOB issue that we've had.
Okay. Um, I think that was all, right?
Well, I had a question about the, the setback, because as I'm reading the section, 23-544, which allows for that extra 10 foot in the rear yard, the text also-
Your side yard. The rear yard?
In the rear yard.
Extra 10 feet of-
Allows, because that, that's what you have in the zoning resolution for justifying for providing a 20-foot rear yard.
Yeah, the R2X allows an extra 10 feet encroachment.
Right, it also, it says, provided it meets the extension in the rear yard per section 23-631, which is the heightened setback that, so the heightened setback requirement, at least as I'm just eyeballing it, it doesn't seem like you meet that, so you need to graphically show it, what the envelope of that heightened setback is, both for the front and for the rear.
Sure.
And, and that would help you guiding whether that section of that storage space that extending out, I think it's in that setback area, and you may need to scale that back.
What is it, it's 23 what?
23-631.
631, which is referred to in the R2X, right?
It's an R2X zone.
Yeah, so R2X, it says in the district integrity restriction, makes 10, 10 feet into the required, required rear yard or rear yard equivalent pursuant to the provisions of section 23-631.
Right, right.
And the 631 is that heightened setback, which is a one-to-one.
Right.
And I think after that-
We'll demonstrate that we're fine, right? R2X allows a 10-foot encroachment on a 30-foot rear yard, allowing 20 feet.
I'm not questioning that, I'm questioning the, the-
Height.
The envelope, right.
The setback, after the perimeter wall, if you do that one-to-one-
You have a 45-degree, yes.
45-degree angle, I don't think that attic space is within that.
We'll demonstrate that.
I mean, it's outside that.
Yeah, we'll demonstrate that in our submission.
Right, okay. And you can understand why that would be required, so that it's not imposing on the rear yard and the neighbor, right?
Sure.
Yeah, oh, I see.
So if you do the 45-degree angle, right?
From there, it seems to be penetrating, right? Unless it falls in some kind of a permitted obstruction, I don't know if there's any permitted obstructions back there.
It didn't seem to.
Yeah, okay.
We'll demonstrate compliance.
Okay. All right, are there any speakers on this? Okay.
And just check that for both front and back.
And also- What's, so December 5th or 12th are available?
Um, we're able to resubmit at the earliest possible convenience, so, so the earliest submission, the earliest submission and hearing date would be great.
The 5th, which is 15th submission?
November 15th submission and 5th hearing date.
Is that okay?
That's great. And Chair, just to reiterate, we obviously are very respectful of the process, as well as a special permit provision, there's no intention of, of any type of sham.
Right.
We, we were relying on, on prior BSA rulings, but I think that once we make adjustments to the side yard, we'll, we'll fall within the required guidelines regardless.
Well, actually, if you were relying on previous ones within the last two, three years, you wouldn't have submitted little bits of walls-
I was going back 10 years.
-inside of showers.
We've had, uh, I mean, we've, no, well, we're, all joking aside, we've, we've had prior, prior precedent, which allowed for external walls to become internal walls in the, in the, within the building, so-
That's been a long time.
But it's only been a goodie.
Right.
But we thank the Chair for consideration, and we'll provide the revisions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number four, 2017-190BZ, 23-11, 31st Road, Queens.
Good afternoon, Ethan Goodman with Fox Rothschild for the applicant. We attended a review session yesterday, and I think it's, uh, it's probably worth saying right off the bat that we, we heard the concerns that were expressed by the Chair with respect to the doctrine at hand here. And we have already thought about ways in which we can take a hard look at certainly the ground floor of this development, to see if there is a way to, to rearrange and reconfigure, so that the community center portion of the development is removed from the rear yard, so that would not be driving a waiver for rear yard. We're not quite at a stage at which we can sort of present what that is, but we, we're going to take a hard look. We would look to minimize, if not entirely eliminate, that request for relief. So I'd be happy to talk about the, the community center and why it's here and the importance of it, but I think that right off the bat was probably a threshold issue.
Yes.
So we, we are taking a good look at that.
And also to take that one step further, is that the community center doesn't, and the parking, doesn't drive the need for other waivers?
That's correct. The, the second step is the parking, and that as well, we're going to take a hard look at, at how to configure parking such that it's not driving other elements of the building, such that it, it drives the need for waivers. Those two elements, yes, definitely.
Okay. Good, okay. All right. And we had financial issues. I think that was basically where we went to next, right? Financial demonstration, right?
Yeah, sure, sure. We, we also heard you on the financials. We have a, a financial consultant here who, who can speak. She is in the process of putting together financials that are more along the lines of the layout that you were looking for, not as, as much driven by the, by the percent, percent financing tax credit programs, and more on a cost-per-unit basis. And we understand you're looking for something that's, that's more of sort of a sliding-scale analysis, going from the as-of-right to the proposed, and looking at the finances and how they work. So she'd be happy to actually answer any specific questions you had here, but we would also ask that you give us a chance to do a, a more formal submission on that.
Okay, okay. Um, did you want to ask any specific questions? Maybe too, too early to- Yeah, I mean, I don't have anything specific to ask, other than what I said yesterday, but still, I wanted to just make the point again, that the construction costs of the senior center portion of the building, that has to be addressed, and whether or not that's actually driving the need for a greater number of units to lower the cost per unit.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, we hear you.
And then we also had seeker questions, Department of Parks, continuing discussion about the E designation, we don't know.
Right, yeah.
Okay, but I wanted, I just want to take this opportunity with respect to this whole idea of expanding the Cornell Doctrine and applying it to anything other than the low-income housing, very, very specifically. Low-income housing developed by experienced not-for-profit, low-income housing developers. Just a little while ago, we had another hearing, and the applicant, who famously takes every opportunity it can to take advantage of openings that are created by the BSA, instantly referred to this idea of the expansion of the Cornell Doctrine, and that's the reason why it cannot be expanded to cover anything else, except for the provision of the low-income housing component. So otherwise, it, it's too slippery of a slope, we can't do this, right? We cannot risk that another applicant comes in and says, "I want deference for my basketball courts, my other kinds of activities, because without it, my low-income housing project just doesn't have what it takes," right? Or my, any other kind of a project doesn't have what it takes, which is what essentially we were being told this morning, when that applicant acknowledged that we were, in his words, "expanding Cornell." So we closed the door at the provision of low-income housing by not-for-profits who are experienced, okay? No senior center expansion, no parking expansion, nothing, okay? Otherwise, I'm not willing to, to risk it, because the board is sued all the time, and there will be repercussions that were not intended here, okay? Just on the record, make that clear. Okay, anything you wanted to add, Counselor, okay? All right, understood?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like me to address some of the seeker questions?
Sure, if you want.
Okay, sure. So with regard to open space, there was a comment on parks that we should talk about a little bit more, because this is an underserved area. Just to be clear, that nobody has determined that this would be a significant adverse seeker impact on open space, but nonetheless, that's something that, that may not have been clear on our drawings, we will make it clear. The roof of this building will have a rooftop open space of 5,600 square feet.
Which roof?
So, the roof of Captain Chartin II, the, the building that is proposed.
This, this is two.
I, I know, this building. Which roof? The very top roof?
The very top roof, the very top.
Let's go on back in, very top roof.
The very top roof. And, and so that's, that's just, so there'll be, there'll be really a generous space for, for the seniors to go outside, they won't have to go in any parking lot or anything like that.
Right.
The second thing was with regard to some outstanding things with the E designation. We know there was an air quality E for use of natural gas as a heating system. We have also been in discussions about also seeking an E designation for the Phase 2 work and doing any remediation that might be deemed necessary. We think those two will really allow us to move forward at a rapid pace for this and get financing and move the project forward, and, and it'll be a, it'll be a, a much easier to do all at once when we start mobilizing for construction.
So I have a question about that open area, for those people who have to get in the elevator and go all the way up to the top of the seventh floor, whatever floor it ends up being when the building gets reconfigured to respond to our questions. So there was a whole discussion about how senior centers are used, and we were told that senior centers that are all on one level aren't used, like, people don't- senior centers that are all on one level aren't used, like people don't like to get in the elevator and go to the next level. So here we're putting recreation space for the occupants of the building on the roof. Why is, doesn't the same rule apply there?
Well, okay, so first, I wouldn't say that senior centers that are in two levels are not used, right?
No, they said much less used.
Much less, much less used, and that is true. With regard to the open space for residents of the building, basically every resident of the building to get to or from their apartment, provided unless they use the stairs, will need to get in the elevator. They will either go down or they will go up to, to get to or from their apartment.
Mm-hmm.
So having an open space on the roof, you're getting in the elevator to go anywhere, be it to the ground floor open space, to a first floor, to a rooftop. So you're just pressing a button. It's not as though you are traveling in from the street and you're going to a senior center. So we think the rooftop open space is open space that would be used as much, if not even maybe more than open space that is in the back, that is a little darker and less open, maybe there are fewer trees there. So we think, we think it will be, it will be used. They will be used to getting to their apartments by going in an elevator.
This is east, west, north, south.
North. So it's south face, it's north facing? Right, okay.
Yeah. That is north.
That's north, okay. South, okay. Just checking. So it's a northern exposure, this rear yard?
It, it is generally northern exposure, yes.
And there is a tall building right behind it. That's the construction, seven stories.
The ideal actually would be where the so-called parking is. But anyway, okay. Okay. So with respect to that, since there is all this language in your papers about how seniors don't like to be on other floors for their area, you should talk about whether the, either Catholic charities or other organizations that they're familiar with because they sort of all work in the same disciplines, is aware of other rooftop areas that are well utilized by the population of this particular special needs group.
Sure. Why don't I let Catholic charities actually speak to that specific point?
Hi, my name's Tim McManus. I'm the Vice President of Pop Development with Catholic Charities. Just going back to the elevator comment, the issue we had was it would require an additional elevator bank that would just serve one story for the senior center. So it was more about cost. That's, that's, it's very hard to build low-income housing and have an additional expense to serve non-residential property that doesn't generate a lot of income was, was more the issue around the, the second elevator. But we have over 36 buildings throughout the, throughout the two boroughs that we serve and in a number of these buildings, we do have rooftop spaces. The key in designing them is to make sure they're safe, you know, for seniors that have certain physical, different physical needs. You know, we have to put additional space between the parapet walls and just to make sure they're safe, that nobody. I, I won't elaborate.
Okay. So maybe you could give us a little information on that?
Sure.
Because not to contradict the statement you just made about the two elevators, the papers go on and on in several places about how seniors don't, won't go to the center that's located on a second floor, hence it all has to be located on one floor. And did mention, yes, and of course, we'd have to have a second elevator, but that didn't seem to be what was carrying the argument. It seemed this whole idea.
We'll take a, we'll take a look. We have other senior centers that are multi-floored without elevators. I don't know if that's what we were addressing, but in that situation, the, the floors that are above or below the main floor really are not, are not used.
Always a good idea to read the papers written by your council.
Yeah, it's just very, very specific that I don't recall.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. Just make sure that you read what they submit to make sure it's correct, okay?
Yep, yep.
All right. Any other comments here?
I had a question.
Uh-huh.
About the E designation, air quality service, is it an E designation or can it be incorporated?
We do not have, we do not need an E designation. If, if the lead agency for seeker is okay with incorporation, then we're okay with it. It's fine. And I think the question is what drove that? It was more about, I believe it was Captain Charton 1 being taller than we are. So the way they do the curve, if it's within a certain distance and it's taller, they want to make sure the emissions don't hit that residence possibly. So that's why it passed the natural gas test and that's why we're doing that.
Okay. So then, but I understood that, so what's happening with the Phase 2 work plan?
Phase 2, we are, we reached out to BUP. We're waiting for response on the designation.
Okay. So there might still be an E designation for hazmat. Okay. All right. Are there any speakers? Did I ask this already? Forget. Okay. Okay. So you need some time to work on these projects, on the plans?
Yeah, we've, we've already begun work, so I think we'll, as soon as you can get us on, we'll, we'll be ready.
Okay. December 5th, but you really should be.
What's your?
Ready with something good.
What's your timeline for the funding?
So for the funding, we are seeking to close on funding in June, which means we need a building permit, which is, which is why we're really trying to start our construction drawings basically by the end of this year. So if, you know, if we are on in December, it'd be great to, to be able to, to, to close and hopefully grant in December. So that, I know that's, that's up to us. I understand.
You'd be responsive to the board's comments to the MACs.
Yes.
Right? Okay. So I guess that's a question about the funding because the way that, again, the papers were phrased was, were that we don't have funding, but this is normally how we do things when we, when we put together the funding on a project. So then how is it that you're in a position to know that you're going to close in June if you don't already have some level of commitment or terms or something from the various funding sources?
We, so on the contrary, we don't know that we can close in June. What we do know is that if we don't get started on construction drawings in December, there's no way we can close in June.
No, but, no way you can close, but there still has to be somebody you talk to who says, if you start construction drawings and you have your permit by June, we will give you this much.
Yes. Why don't I, I let Amy Larivier talk to our financial consultant?
We in fact have been in touch.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, yes. Amy Larivier, I'm the President of ALC. We're a small consulting firm that specializes in affordable special needs and senior housing development around the country. We actually have been working with the New York State Housing Finance Agency. We have an application for a tax-exempt bond subject to volume cap pending with them. We are in constant communication with them. We are in the back of their queue because we're still here with you. But we, we have the application in. We have, with that comes our as-of-right 4% tax credits. And we have also talked to folks, Jenna Brynas, who runs the SARAH program at HPD. So in fact, we are in, in the queue for, for financing and June would be really optimal for us. We could go further out if we needed to, but June would be optimal.
Right, okay. But I, I'm just, so you have an applicant, I'm just trying to understand how, at what point do you know we have funding for this project, right? So, right?
Yeah. So it is a balancing act when you're working with a really stressed volume cap situation in the city. So we are in their pipeline. They have reviewed our application. They won't move us.
They, they.
I'm sorry, that New York State Housing Finance Agency, they are the allocator of tax-exempt bonds for these types of projects. So they will move us forward in their pipeline and give us what's called an inducement letter showing us that volume cap has been allocated for the project once we prove to them that we have a timeline that can actually get us to closing in a certain period of time. It's common to submit your application for the bond approval while you're working on some other issues, whether it's zoning or environmental or a combination of things.
Okay. So that's just for the bond financing?
And with the bond financing comes automatic 4% as-of-right low-income housing tax credits. And we're also working with HPD SARAH program. So we've been in discussions with them as well.
So then with respect to the SARAH program, is it the same thing as the way it works with HFA in that?
Yes, yes. They're aware of us. We would have to submit, before they really spend a whole lot of time with us, which is understandable, we would have to be able to submit some schematic drawings to the builds department at HPD to get them involved in the process of reviewing, reviewing what we want to do.
And which you have not done yet.
No, we have not.
No, because they don't have it approved.
So you didn't submit an as-of-right? You're just waiting to get the?
No, we have not submitted as-of-right. We had trouble with the numbers.
Based upon what BSA grants, you will submit that to builds?
Yes.
So, so, but SARAH is aware that you're working on this project, but more than that, they don't know?
Yes.
Is that right?
They, they are aware that we're working on the project. They, they know the sponsor, some of the really threshold items. They know the team. They approve of the team. They, they are aware that the bond application was submitted. So a lot of the things that should be in place are in place at this time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So just a question. So if you were like representing a bunch of total beginners, you know, people who have never developed affordable housing before, would, and, but you're representing them, so you know how to do it, right? Would you be getting the same kind of responses from SARAH and HFA and so on?
It's a lot more work when you have new sponsors. I mean, we work with new clients all the time. It's not the same as calling and saying, I'm working with Catholic charities. Certainly everyone knows them and their reputation rightfully gets them a little more attention. A new client tends to take longer and we have to go through many more meetings to prove our merit, so to speak.
So is it possible that with a beginner, they wouldn't get funded because the agency would find that perhaps it's, they're not up to this skill set?
The, the agency, because housing's so needed, the agency would probably recommend that they partner with a group like Catholic charities.
Okay.
Or bring in a joint venture or something like that.
Okay. So, and in, and in your experience, when it's somebody with the experience of Catholic charities, does the project normally proceed?
Yes, um, yes. You know, these are really needed projects. I don't have to tell you that, so.
Sure, no, we know. I just, you know, some of this is because it's, the application is being reviewed in the context of what's the minimum variance necessary to create the minimum number of units that make it a viable project, right? And so then we say, okay, so is, you know, the claim is that it's the 90, whatever number, 4 units, but one of the questions was, well, why not 75 units? 64 apparently doesn't work, though we don't know why. Why not 75 or why not 80? How do you get to that magic 94 units? That's a question for you to actually help us.
And we've been working on that and working with Catholic charities on that. And a lot of it, you know, there's a lot of different variables that go into the review. You know, the lower unit count, the as-of-right unit count, and we will provide this to you in writing and in a chart, the as-of-right unit count, because this is a prevailing wage project, the per-unit cost was really exceptionally high, higher than I've ever seen, I'm sure higher than anything that's been at HPD. The other thing that didn't work on that analysis was the, the income-to-expense ratio. We need to hit certain income-to-expense ratios in order to get banks or bond allocators comfortable with the project. And again, that's all, it's, it's all important. The, the income-to-expense ratio did not work at all and the per-unit cost was too high on the lower projects. Working our way up to the 94 unit count, we were able to hit the parameters for all the different subsidies that are available for the construction of the building. And we were also able to show that we could run it at the appropriate income-to-expense ratio for a minimum of 15 years, but really we take it out longer than that for our clients and it, and it was able to operate over the course of lifetime of the building and cash flow.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Interesting. Okay.